The Town of Thompson Planning and Zoning Commission Subcommittee on Regulation will be right to order it is Wednesday, no, it is.
Monday.
Monday, June 29, 2020, at 6:01 PM. We will begin with a roll call. Mr. Santos.
Brian Santos, present.
Mr. Hill.
Alvin Hill, present.
Ms. Chatel.
Ms. Chatel, present.
Ms. DeRogier.
Ms. DeRogier, present.
Mr. Lankie.
John B. Lankie, present.
Mr. Wurge.
Finally got in.
Mr. Wurge, present.
He's muted. I'll unmute him.
Hey.
Mr. Krogo.
My Krogo, present.
Ms. Langley.
I heard her.
And Joseph Rody Brown. We will seat Mr. Santos for John Rice and Mr. Hill for Chris Nelson. Okay, we are going to take the discussion guide a little bit out of order this evening. We do have a representative from the NDDH here, so we want to jump to. It's the third page of the discussion guide. And it brings us to page 51 in the draft, which is Article 5A, Section 2, Trailers and Mobile Homes. And so we are going to. Here the, yeah, here what the NDDH has to say about mobile homes.
Hi, Sue. So if you want to just repeat a little bit of what you said, but any, any input that you would have about Department of Health requirements for citing of trailers and mobile homes would be helpful to the commission. They were specifically interested in your input.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. I'm Sue Stark, the Director of Health with the Northeast District Department of Health. I looked at this today to see how we might help. And as it turns out, we don't really have oversight over trailers, mobile homes, or mobile home parks. The Department of Consumer Protection has oversight for mobile home parks. The town building official has authority over mobile homes that are recited and placed on residential properties. And they are the people who go in and make a determination as to whether or not it meets all the building requirements. The Northeast District Department of Health doesn't have any ordinances or special rules for mobile homes. The only thing that we would do is investigate a complete violation where somebody was dumping sewage or water. But otherwise, it's the town that does follow up on this. So we don't have anything in particular there. I think Cindy wanted to double check to see if we have any particular rules and there's nothing beyond what's required by your building official.
Okay, so there's no particular interest, or I guess stated interest that the NDDH has in terms of sanitation for, for these things, which I guess would also cover campgrounds, right?
It is that they can't be dumping on the property, but if they're a mobile home that has the water source, or they're going someplace to be able to dispose of whatever the, whatever they're gathering up, that's how it would, that's how it would be covered.
Does anybody else have any questions for Sue? Is that, you know, we don't want to move on from this, you know, rashly, but it, it sounds to me like the, the concerns that were raised to bring her in are not specifically relevant.
What were the concerns that they brought? What was the concerns? I missed that.
Well, the, the thought was that NDDH would have some specific guidelines for essential septic disposal for trailers and mobile homes that would need to be, you know, addressed or incorporated into this section. And Sue is suggesting that that is not the case.
Yes. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think they thought that NDDH had oversight for this, and we don't. If they needed a well permit, or they needed a septic permit in order to operate there, they would come to us to get a well permit or a septic permit. But there's nothing in particular about a mobile home or trailer home that's, that NDDH has particular ordinances for.
Yeah, so this, this particularly came up in, in, you know, if, if a trailer home or a, a mobile home is used as a, a temporary dwelling when a, when a residence is being constructed, and also in terms of the, the camping grounds. As well.
So it sounds like it's, you're talking about something that somebody will drive up and live in, and then someday it will drive back out.
Yeah, I think that's more or less what, what we're, we're picturing here.
So that means that the people with a vehicle that they drive around in will drive it to whatever places that they use to get their water supply or to empty out their tanks. And that's not something that's covered by the Health Department.
So, so what happens if we allow construction trailers, or if we allow a trailer on property? If a house is, if they're building a house, or their house burnt down and they have to live in the trailer for three or four months before they repair it, replace it? So you don't, you don't have any control over that?
No, like, like you said, I'm, I have the vision where it's the thing that it's got its own water tank and its own septic tank.
Okay.
And that's something that they drive in with and they drive out with. If they were putting in a septic system or a well, they would come to us for a permit.
Okay.
But it isn't the kind of thing that they're putting in at the lake, and they wouldn't be able to put it in at the lake because of separate systems.
Okay, so, so what, so what the community is doing is that they're depending on the integrity of the person who is camping or has to have that trailer to live on their property to build a house, et cetera. So we're depending on the integrity of the person to dispose of their, their waste in the proper fashion. That's what you're saying.
Right. We don't, we don't do spot checks or anything like that.
Okay. But if there is a complaint from a neighbor stating that they're disposing, they're letting their gray water out on the ground, or they're literally disposing their septic on the ground, et cetera, hiding it someplace in the woods or something, then we call you.
If you thought that was happening, but what the law says is that you have your building official can inspect the unit and issue a certificate of approval. State that the condition is habitable. And that, again, is in Connecticut General Statute, Section 21, 68A. And I put in an email that I can send to Tara.
Sure. That'd be great. So, so then what we have to do in the zoning office is, is to coordinate with the building office for these temporary trailers?
Yes, because it could be, according to what this section says, the, it's, if the party requests an inspection, or if the individual or the third party requests the inspection. Sorry, I have it all, too many words in front of me right now. But it's the building official that would go and check to see that the mobile manufactured home meets the requirements of the town, and that it's fit for habitation.
Interesting. Okay, great.
All right, are you satisfied with, with that, Cindy?
Oh, yes, yes, definitely. Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Was there another? And I think you had NDDH there twice, but it was basically the same kind of issue.
Yeah, one was for the, the campsites, and one was for the temporary structure, like for a new residence.
And, yeah, so that would be the same thing for a mobile home that people are driving in, driving out. There was some of the other language that had to do with development of the area, and that is something that the Environmental Health Team Leader is looking at. Because as far as I can see, it isn't on the agenda for tonight, and it is something that she could bring you specific information, but would likely have to involve the State Department of Public Health because of the conditions in that area and the, you know, the tight area around the lake and special exceptions that it would have to be made if there were any plans to build or to put in septic systems.
Okay. Great. So you and, you and I can, yeah, you and I can connect about that, Sue, or you can connect me to your colleague, so I can, I can follow up on that. Because that's a pesky, open issue that we haven't really come to a good resolve on, but obviously we need to shortly.
You're not alone. Because any other place that has a nice area to live in, lots of people want to crowd into and create conditions that aren't favorable for those who are already there, are facing some of the very same issues. That's why it gets complicated. That's why they try to come up with lots of special designs that can help people fit into the area if that's what they want, but make sure that the water stays clean and safe. So you can come back to us, and we can work with you and the state to try to make sure that you're getting exactly what you want in a way that keeps people healthy.
Great. Thank you very much, Sue, for coming in. Does anybody have any other questions for Sue before we let her go?
I do. I have a quick question for Sue. It might be directly or indirectly related to mobile homes. But my question is around temporary toilets or porta-johns. Is there any, like, I'll give an example. Like, in my neighborhood, there's this person claiming that they're not operating a business, but they have two permanent porta-johns in their, you know, on their lawn. Is there any control over that? I, I'll just oppose it in that form. But I'll get.
You know, there's a lot of things right at the tip of my brain, and that's not one of them. But I don't think that we have oversight over the porta-johns and how long they stay there, but we would get the complaints if they were overfilled, overflowing.
Yeah.
I can look into it, but I think that's still a building official thing, and I think sometimes it's just required whenever there's work being done on a property.
Yeah, there's no work.
And they're legal.
Yeah, okay. It has been there a very long time, and there's no construction work that I'm aware of going on at that particular location, but wanted to ask. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sue before we thank her and let her go?
All right, everybody, stay safe. You're all in your houses. Wear your masks if you go out. Wash your hands. Keep your distance. Stay healthy. Bye, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sue. I'll, I'll follow up with you via email.
Thank you, Sue.
All right. You're welcome. Bye, Cindy.
Okay, so we'll swing back up to the top of the discussion guide, which is, brings us to page 49 in the draft, 5A, Section 1, Development Standards for Home Occupations.
I, I guess I can talk here, because I said that I wanted some, some time to, to come up with, you know, put my thoughts together in an organized manner. I still, I still have not completed that. If, if you want statements out of me, I'm certainly willing to make statements about some of the research I've done. My bottom line is, is that there's only one other area, and I looked at four in the state of Connecticut, one other area that has a rural business district, and that is just specifically in their residential district, which they have three of them. This is Hebron. And it's limited to farm products, which we, we cover under farm store, farm stands, which is right for people to set up a little table if they have stuff growing, if they want to sell. I would prefer to continue to make my argument on either one of two things, totally eliminate the rural business into our districts, and then depend on, just, just work with the home O.C. and sort of expand those a little bit more. What was the second one? Oh, I've carried, okay. So, so that's basically where I'm at with it. You know, I just, oh, or the other thing, if you keep the rural business, is just keep it in the rural area. Because that's, you know, I'm looking for definitions. I don't know where we got our definition of rural business, et cetera. So there, it still needs some more work for me to present this logically and organized.
Okay, so what I would like to do is I'd like to jump down, one, two, three, four. Okay, so it's actually the fourth note in our discussion guide. It's the second page. It brings us to page 50 of the drafts, and it gets to the question of what is a rural business, and why should it be in districts other than the rural residential district? Right, so, so, like, the deceased artist formerly known as Prince, I think we need to start calling businesses formerly known as rural businesses. Terry here has suggested limited neighborhood enterprise as, as a potential rename. I, for one, think that this commission has done a lot of work and recognized the need for a second tier of business intensity. So something that's a little bit more intensely used than a home occupation, but isn't as intense as, you know, opening your own store. So I, so, I guess the, the first question is, do we accept that premise that I think we've already agreed to? That a, a second tier of business is desirable for us to enumerate and to describe?
In your whole town? Because you have commercial and, you know, the, the corridor that is allowing businesses.
Yes, in the, yes, in the whole town. I actually.
Makes absolutely no sense, Joe, but go ahead. I'm not going to say anymore.
I read a riveting article today that pointed out the, that one of the, the lessons that planning and zoning entities should learn from, from this pandemic is the greater need to offer flexibility for home businesses. And I think this limited neighborhood enterprise does that.
What does that mean? What does the word mean? Where's the definition? Okay.
So I, I think the point is, Cindy, that we're defining it with the parameters. So you, you have the parameters of the home occupation, and the, what for the purposes of this discussion, we'll start calling the limited neighborhood enterprise, must not only satisfy those, but we have suggested two additional, which have to do with parking and lighting. Now, it certainly could be posited that there could be more separate conditions to describe that would separate those two tiers of activity, one being significantly, or sufficiently more intense, that it's stepped out of the boundaries of something that happens just within the four walls, whether they be the four walls of the home, or the, or the home plus the garage, the home plus the barn, and into the neighborhood in a way that is still non-disruptive. I, for one, think that home daycare qualifies as a limited neighborhood enterprise. It does not necessarily happen within the boundaries of the house. The kids could be in the yard. They're playing during their, you know, there's some possibly more, more need to describe parking, or, or request a parking area. So this is, you know, and you could have examples of what businesses fit these characteristics, but they would just be exemplar, right? Because one of the other things we've said is we can't anticipate all propositions that we get that come before us. What they have, what they have to do is they have to demonstrate that they fit the criteria that we set.
Is, is limited neighborhood enterprise as a site plan review? I forgot what it is.
That's correct.
So they'd be coming, they'd be coming.
Go ahead, Charlene.
So they would be coming in front of us anyway, or like, it's, I think we're just getting stuck on the name of something. You can call it the circus group, but they still got to come in front of us, and if it doesn't work, or we don't want it, then we just say, no, it doesn't fall into those perimeters or whatever. Like, we ultimately, we have the final say. ZBA has the final say. And if they don't like what we say, they'll go to an attorney, and they'll have the final say. But I feel like it, like we're, the whole point of change in the reg was to have people be able to do businesses in where, where they're at. We don't have a main street. We'll never have a main street. And we certainly don't want people not to come here because they can't start a business, whatever that business looks like. Do you know what I mean? Like, the guy with those little houses there that he came in. He never would have been able to do it ever, but then he came before us, he talked to us. It was interesting. It was tight. It fit. And we helped him have a little cottage that you can rent as an Airbnb. Like, I, I don't, I don't, it shouldn't be so difficult. I feel like it's, this is too difficult for me. I'd forget it. I guess I'm not sure what Cindy, what is the, like, I'm not sure what the problem is. Like, it feels like it's a problem, and I don't know what the problem is, is, can you be like black and white with it? If the, if there is a problem, or?
Mr. Santos.
The problem is the neighbors being concerned about all businesses being, that's one, that would be one issue. The second issue is, like I said last week, is that you gave the authority for the zoning officer to approve home OCS unless they, the officer felt that it needed to go before you for approval. And now you've replaced that time and work with a rural business. I, I don't think neighborhood enterprises, you know, I, whatever, whatever you call it. Now, now that you've increased the work for that office to have to go and, you know, do, do all the preparation work on the application. The other, the other thing that I kind of fear is the people who repair motors and lawn mowers and, you know, it, it getting bigger and bigger, you know, out of control. And you do have one, I believe it's on Watson Road, that is totally out of control, and it was, it was originally a home occupation.
Cindy.
But it's approved, so there's nothing you can do about it.
Mr. Hill, Ms. Langley, and then Mr. Santos.
Yes, Alvin Hill. Let's keep it simple, please.
That's why I say stay with home OCS.
Can you let Alvin continue his sentence, please?
Yes, I will.
Yes, please. A business occupation within a home stays in the home. A rural business can be on the exterior. The difference between the two ideas, located entirely within the structure, or within and part of the exterior of the structure.
I think that's a good differentiation. Charlene?
Well, and I, I guess, like, it's work. I think, like, if we're trying to, it's unfortunate that we want Cindy to work outside of the hours that she's, she can, do you know what I'm saying? And I get, I'm trying to be sensitive to her. The less work she stays inside, when you're only working 15 hours, it doesn't give you much, or 19, or whatever. But it is going to be work. But having, growing your town is work. And so if it gets to be too much for Cindy for working, then we, as a commission, have to go in front of the selectmen and say, it's time. Put your money where your mouth is, and let's start paying. You want to grow Thompson? Then show us the green, and let's pair the money, and let's grow Thompson. But you can't, we can't give people nothing and expect this town to grow. It's just not going to happen. And if you think it is, then get out while you can, because it's not going to go anywhere. So I know that she doesn't want work, not that she doesn't want work, she doesn't have time to do the work that she already has. So, you know, don't think in the box, Cindy. Try to think outside of the box, and we'll take care of you out there the very best that we can. But I feel like we're limiting everything. Well, we can't do this because I can't do that, and we can't do that because I don't have time for that. And it, we're never going to go anywhere if we don't take the step and just grow. That's it. I'm done.
Mr. Santos.
Just a quick question. I just want to make sure I understand something. So we have home occupancy, I'm going to just call them regulations, okay? Are all the home occupancy regulations also required in the rural, rural business?
Yes.
Regulations?
Yes.
And then some additional ones, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so I think Alvin actually suggested this last time. Since all of those regulations on rural business are, would be included into what we're classifying as limited neighborhood enterprise, and then a few more, why don't, why don't we just call it limited rural, rural business, instead of giving it its a whole new name? Because it already has the same regulations as rural business.
What we're, I think what we're talking about is replacing the term rural business with limited neighborhood enterprise.
That's what I was missing. Okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a third category, Brian. It's just, there was, there was some hangup over the term rural.
Okay.
Which, to a certain extent, I understand, because it may create an impression that was not helping clarify the purpose of the second tier of home-based business.
Okay, then I'm in favor of the limited neighborhood enterprise. Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You know, and I think, yeah, Mr. Wurge.
Could someone explain to me what the difference is between a home occupation and this other thing, whatever you call it? Irrelevant. But tell me what the difference is between that and a home occupation.
Home occupation, Bob, is specifically within the structure. There's nothing on the exterior.
Correct. So you're going to say that this zone, that you're going to, new zone that you're going to put in, you, you can have a business outside the building that you're living in?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, it's, it's something of an oversimplification, but, you know, inside four walls is a regular home O.C. Inside four walls.
Right.
Your four walls plus your remaining property, as long as you can demonstrate that the character of what you are doing is not disruptive. And that is defined by adhering to the conditions of the home occupation, plus a couple of extras that have been proposed, and possibly, we could propose one or two more that would be preservative of the neighborhood integrity. I think that's the most open question is, are those two additional criteria sufficient to separate the two levels of intensity? Or is there something that has been overlooked?
So what I'm understanding, then, the difference between the home occupation is it's in the home as it is presently, the home occupation. Now, this thing you want to do is going to be a home occupation, but you can have an accessory building and do your business in there?
I would think of it more along the terms of, and a good example, I think, is the one that I, I just brought up, a, a, a home daycare center. one that I, I just brought up, a, a, a home daycare center, right? Those kids may be out in an enclosed yard, uh, so that's outside the structure of the home. It has, it, it may have an intensified need for more parking, because people dropping off their kids in the morning, and they would have to demonstrate that with a statement of need for parking. Um, another thing that had occurred to me that may be, and you could go either way with this one, because Cindy and I were talking about this this afternoon, you've been in country towns where people have a barn where they have an antique shop in it, right? Looks the same way it looked the day before they had an antique shop, when it was just their junk in it, they've cleaned it up, and they have a store that's got hours. Looks appropriate to the neighborhood, that would be probably the next category into the, whether you wanna call it a rural business or a limited neighborhood enterprise, which I have suggested is the less consistent term.
Okay, I like both your examples, Tara, but my question now is, can I build that barn next to my house and open an antique shop?
And that is a good question. Um, I would be inclined to say yes, if it's in, I mean, if you're gonna build a barn or a garage that fits the building codes, the, the parameters for the neighborhood, is consistent with a structure that would otherwise exist, I think you could. But that's really, that's, that is an issue probably worth discussing.
Yes, because I, I, there's a lot of ramifications, or potential ramifications. If you put another building up, and you call that a business, like out in my front yard, that's gonna devalue my property and my neighbor's property, because it's a, you're running a business there, not a home occupation. So, if, if it's a business, it should be in a business district, not in a rural area that you will affect the neighbors in terms of value of their property, or noise. I mean, I, I like the idea of a kids, you know, put the kids out in the yard, and let them play, as part of your home occupation. But I don't know about building another barn on your property-
So you are, so you are suggesting that we should not include the provision that somebody could build onto their existing property, it's got to be in the existing building footprint?
Yes.
Is that what you're suggesting, Bob?
Yes.
And the-
Okay.
Uh, Tara?
Is it Mr. Lenke, is that you?
I'm sorry, yeah, it's me, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone, uh, my thing is still not working right here. Uh, if it's a pre-existing building of, like you said, a barn, and he wants to convert it, longer than it's been there before, you know, with the home occupation, and then he wants to move out there and have his business, if it's already there, I see that there shouldn't be a problem, but as Mr. Wurge says, you know, he's kinda like, well, why should we, why should he build a building, if it's gonna meet the aesthetic, yes, but still, you're putting up a building for a whole, you know, to, to move outside the home occupation.
So you're agreeing with Bob, is that, is that right?
Well, I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with Bob to a point. My, but my thing is, is that if the building, if the barn has been there, or the building's already there because of the, it's authentic, and it's, it's already there, then that person should have the right to move some part of his occupation out to that barn, if it's pre-existing. But to put one up, I have to agree with Mr. Wurge.
So let me give you another hypothetical, and I'm not saying I have a feeling one way or the other on this. Say you've got a, a homeowner with acreage, right, a horse, a potential horse property, and that's exactly what they decide to do. They build a barn for a horse property, and they wanna have, you know, riding lessons. Is that an acceptable neighborhood limited enterprise, or is it not? Because it's not actually agriculture, right? They're not producing an agricultural product, they're not growing, they're not, they might be breeding, but, you know, you see where I'm getting. It, it's something that's not exactly cut and dried.
Right.
That would be considered agriculture, because it's livestock. And, and you could do that, I believe, on 10 acres right now, anyway. Because it's agricultural, that's agricultural.
But, but didn't we talk about, like, because we're not like a down, we don't have a downtown Putnam, we're really trying to accommodate for people that live in Thompson? Like, I get, like, I build the barn, and I wanna start, oh no, I buy, I have a house that has a garage, and I repair lawn mowers. You come over, it's, I'm staying in my garage, I'm not going outside of it, you give me a home occupancy loan to do that, or business thing, so I can do my business in my garage. Well, then, and it explodes, I'm, I'm inundated with work, but I can't go into my garage, or I can't even build a garage, so now I have to sell my house in Thompson and move somewhere where I can do my business, because I can't build myself a garage. So, you're kinda, we're, we're sitting here, making choices and changes to go back to the same old way we used to be. No garages, don't work outside your house, don't have a business, own a sewing machine and make quilts, and be done with it.
So, I'm just gonna quickly delineate, uh, what we are proposing for home occupations, which would also apply to the second tier of business, whatever we end up calling it. Uh, home occupations meeting the following standards of operation. Uh, interruption, congestion, change to the character of the neighborhood in terms of appearance, noise, traffic, yada, yada, shall be minimized. No more than three persons, other than those residing on the premises, shall be employed. The house shall be primarily used as a residence. Changes to the outside appearance shall be minimized, and shall be consistent with a residential structure. A separate entrance may be added, provided it would be consistent with a residential structure. No on-street parking shall be permitted, off-street parking shall be provided to accommodate all parking needs of the home occupancy. The commission may limit the number of parking spaces allowed where it is determined necessary to limit the volume of traffic. Activities or storage associated with the home occupation may not take place outside the residential structure unless they are screened from view from the street and neighboring properties. Solid waste generated by the home occupation shall not substantially exceed that which would normally be generated by residential use. Equipment or processes used in the home occupation which generate noise, vibration, et cetera, et cetera, shall be minimized. Processes and related equipment shall be screened from view, and shall only be in use between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Activities resulting in known hazardous or toxic fumes are prohibited. Uh, licenses, permits required by appropriate agencies shall be submitted with the application, and following approval of the permit, the applicant shall register the home occupation as a trade certificate with the town clerk. That's all for a home occupancy, so that's either level, right? The basic, the basic or the basic plus.
You, you left out the most important thing, you're allowing the whole house to be used as a home occupancy. And all the references, all the, um, research I did in other towns, there's always been a percentage, and it went from anywhere from 25 to 50%. If you, if you do not give a percentage of space that can be used, then I believe that you're creating a situation like we have on Lilian Avenue in Thompson.
Correct. I, I don't know what you're specifically citing, but I, I have made this statement before, and I'll, I'll make it again, and the commission can do whatever they want with it. I believe our authority ends at the threshold. If the exterior is consistent with a residential neighborhood, the activity does not take place outside, except in ways that have been specifically named as permitted, we have no business going into people's homes, making them show us, oh, it's this 33%, oh, is this 34%, is this 51%, then you're out of luck. That is an inefficient use of your time. So when I said that I wanted to make your job better and more efficient, it's not necessarily that the amount of work is increased or reduced, it's that the work that you're being asked to do is of value to the commission, and I would submit, but it is up to the commission, that taking pictures of how much of a percentage of the inside of a house is used is not a valuable exercise.
I would suggest that, um, that I think the, I think the commission talked about this a lot in earlier stages, and I would also wonder how enforceable that is, you know, I think, um-
How enforceable, what is, Joe?
A, a percentage of, of-
Well, every, every town in Connecticut's doing it, so I guess we'd be the only one that wouldn't.
Well, we can be a trendsetter. Mr. Rogers.
Okay.
I, I kinda wanna agree with Cindy on this, because I think that if you don't at least write some, some sort of limitation, people will just start a business in their home, that is, that you can do just inside, and you, their entire home, which really isn't fair to commercial people, or other people that have a business and have to pay a different, you know, like, you have your, it's just a totally different ballgame. So, if, something in the home, and you don't give them some, some sort of limit. I agree with both, like, I don't think Cindy has to go whenever you want and go, okay, let me measure this out, but I think having no stipulation leaves the door wide open for people to abuse that.
I agree with Mrs. totally.
And Mr. Santos, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I'm just in support of that as well, some sort of percentage, um, on, on that front. And I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Tara, it's, it's, I, I just think it's worked before, and we should have it in there. But I, I just wanna also add, with this limited neighborhood enterprise, the thing that I do like about it is, does provide the ability to say no to people. There's all kinds of guidelines on that front. But my question is, kinda what Cindy was talking about earlier, was, what happens if the business grows too much in that particular area? What are we allowed to do? Are we allowed to cease and desist that operation at that time, or what, what do we do?
I have a- Well, I, I, I think that you would be. I, I, I think that the question of fairness to other commercial enterprises of various kinds, although an understandable point to raise, is not as compelling as one might think. Look, if I've got a business that can fully exist in the four walls of my house, my cost of doing business is whatever it is to do that, but if I've got a business that can't do that, my cost of doing business should be expected to increase, and, and I will pursue, if I can't effectively run the business the way I have described it, and I've grown to that point, that's essentially a high-class problem to have. Now, I'm ready to expand into another forum, and that's the kind of incremental growth that we're trying to encourage with these sets of regulations. I mean, if your primary residence is your primary residence, and all you care about is sleeping on a cot and building widgets in, in the rest of your house, I mean, have at it.
Okay, so, um, what I would like to do is, is, is to move forward on this. So, um, the first thing I would like to do is, the conditions for the home occupation, as far as I can tell, the only one with which we have any, the commission seems to have a concern, is a percentage of the residence to be used for, for the, for the, the home occupation. So I would move, um, a vote yes, is in favor of imposing a percentage, no, is to leave it as is, with no percentage restriction. That is a motion.
I second that motion.
Motion made by the chairman, seconded by Ms. DeRogers. Any discussion on the motion?
Joe, excuse me, but a yes is to have a percentage, and a no is not to have a percentage?
What's the percentage right now?
That's correct. Right now, the, the way the draft, okay, in our current regulations, the, the percentage is 33%. In the draft regulations, as currently written, there is no percentage. Yeah, and so to answer your question, Mr. Krogel, yes is to impose a percentage, no is to leave no percentage defined.
Thank you.
Joe, in the context of the motion, are you recommending a percentage?
No, my, my goal is to do that in the next vote, to first clarify if we want a percentage or not.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, yes to impose a restriction, a percentage, no to leave with that. Mr. Santos. Mr. Hill?
Alvin Hill, yes.
Mr. Krogel?
Yes.
Ms. Langlois?
She's frozen.
Okay, I couldn't hear that, Charlene, we'll come back to you. Ms. DeRogers?
Yes.
I don't know.
You should tell.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wurge?
Yes.
Mr. Lenke?
Yeah.
Uh, Charlene? We'll call her enough-
Can you use, can you use the text function, uh, the chat function, Charlene?
Am I still frozen?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, well, well-
Oh, now we lost her again. Okay, in the meantime, I vote no.
There you are.
Ms. Langlois?
No.
Okay, the, uh, okay, so the motion, yes, by a seven to two vote, okay. Uh, with that in mind, I would now like us to vote on the percentage we would like to recommend.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hill would like 90% of the interior as an occupation.
Mr. Hill moves to, uh, accept 90% of the interior for occupation. Is there a second for that motion?
I will second that.
Mr. Krogel seconds.
90% to be used for the occupation? Is that what you said?
That's what I'm saying, Bob, 90%. That's, I think that's a nice balance between what Tara would like, no, no percentage, or what the commission wants, is a percentage. I mean, we gotta give some common sense to the homeowner. I mean, like Tara said, if you wanna sleep on a cot, rent a house, fine.
That's true.
Hey, I'm, just, before you go any further with this, I'm also, I just noticed something in the phrasing of item C, that I think can be improved to also tighten that down. The way I had it in the draft is, the house shall be primarily used as a residence, I think it would be better to state it, the house shall be the primary residence of the business owner. I think that actually tightens that, as opposed to making it primarily used as a residence, but maybe it's for your employee.
I agree. Thank you, Tara.
Yeah, I'll make that change, that doesn't, that doesn't need any discussion other than that.
Wait a minute, how is it a primary use as a residence with only 10% of the building being the use of the residence? And you're gonna make 90%-
No, it's a home occupancy, Bob.
What are you doing here? Would you please? What is going on?
You're gonna find yourself in the same situation as if, if you didn't have any percentage involved with that 90%. And no one, and like I said, the, the common in the, in the state is 33, 25, 50.
Right.
So we go to 90%, wonderful.
Mr. Santos?
Well, like I said, you're gonna come up with the same problems.
Mr. Santos?
I, I'm sorry to ask this, but all these numbers, I'm getting confused. What is it currently, again?
33%.
33.
Currently, it's 33%.
I, I believe that we should increase it to something, I totally understand what Mr. Wurge is talking about. I don't know if it's 90%, but I would be in favor of 50%, but I also am torn on this particular one.
I'm with you.
I'm 50%.
I would agree, Brian, yeah.
Personally, I thought 75 was a good number, but if the person just wants to sleep in his house, and do his- Personally, I thought 75 was a good number, but if the person just wants to sleep in his house and do his work, and he may need the space to do the work, why not do it?
I just feel like if you're living, living in a dwelling, a residential dwelling, at least 50% of your house should be for residential use, right?
Well, that's me.
But we're, but we're saying should, but what is that should based on? Is it because that's how we would prefer personally to live? Are we imposing our personal standards on what an enterprising person may wish to do in order to found a business? Which our intention may be that this is an incremental step, right? Your home occup and then maybe you come and you, you up it to the, the neighborhood limited enterprise. And, and maybe in a perfect world, right, that business grows to the point where they are ready to have a brick and mortar storefront, office outside the home, whatever it may be. You know, and that's, that is the whole point of having these kinds of businesses is to give flexibility to people to control their own income. And I, I understand the urge to say that if it's a house, it should be a house. But, I mean, you're going to go peek in your neighbor's curtains?
That was the other thing, that if you have percentages of 50, 50%, there's nothing stopping them from using another room for the business and you're never going to know the difference.
That was, that was my point about enforceability, Mr. Krogo. I agree with you. Mr. Santos.
I, I'm just going to add one more thing. I'm, I totally agree with you guys and I think they're going to make it bigger than 50% less than say. But in my opinion, perception is reality and I would like to at least have control of that for this group. It's just the perception of saying 50%. People will think about that. Okay.
And think in mind now, we're talking about a residential zone. In your mind, you can't devalue my property by having a guy fixing lawn mowers or tractor or whatever you want to do beyond 50. 50%, there's a lot of a residential home.
But Bob, to that, to that point, I think the intensity, we, we, we deal with the intensive, the intensity of the use in, in other, in other ways. You know, I, how often do you know what's going on in 90% of your neighbor's house?
That's true.
But it is, as long as it doesn't, the thing that we have to keep in mind is that we have a responsibility as a planning and zoning board to ensure that we're supporting whatever zone we're talking about now. We're talking about a residential zone. So we're responsible to support it as a residential zone. If you want to have a big, a business, a, I mean, an ongoing business beyond 50% of a building in a residential zone, then I don't think you should be able to go beyond it.
Ms. DeRogers.
Let me ask this question of you, Bob. Let me, let me ask if this addresses some of your concerns. Right now, item G under home occupations, activities or storage associated with the home occup may not take place outside the residential structure unless they are screened from view from the street and neighboring properties. Should we just move that down into the next level of intensity?
It may not be a bad idea.
So that, that gives you guys the, the review power when the activity is proposed to be outside the four walls.
Yeah. Ms. See, did you have something?
I did. I think I, I think what my kind of hang up a, a little bit is what the requirements for a business, you have to reach certain requirements. So let's say somebody has a nail salon in their home. How is there any control over the safety of it, the liability of it, the insurance of it? I know when you have a regular business, you have to make sure those things are all in place. If you have a home occupation and Cindy goes and says, okay, well, you guys are approved, this is going to work for you. Where does it, where is the control come in that says it's okay to do that? Because I know like when you're like a real business and you have to really go out there and get the licenses for that and the approval for that, there's a lot of things you have to meet. I know when Ricky and I first had our house on Labby Road, we had such a big spread that he had some, some of his, his equipment there. And we had a drive up from the zoning enforcement officer at that time asking, are you operating out of your home? And it was a two-way street because we had the office there because it was easy for me to work in it. But we had a different location for other stuff, but Ricky would bring the equipment there to work on because that's where the garage was. So it was so wishy-washy and so different, like basically Ricky just needs a home office to operate and a place to park his trucks. He doesn't do two at the same time, but that's why we went off and we bought the, the building on Riverside Drive. So I think it gets, it gets very messy and I don't know what, what, I mean, if you've got 50 or even 90% of your home that you're doing a business and if you're just building widgets, then you know what? I really don't care. If you're doing stitching and sewing, whatever, but it can get really, it can get out of control. And how much can you do at home? You know, like what, where does, where does the line, the line drawn? I do like what you said though, Tyra, about writing the primary residence is for this. You know, and I don't want to stop people. I want our town to grow. But I think it, I feel like this can go way beyond what we expect it to. So there has to be something that makes it, you know, you have to be accountable for.
Agreed.
So I think to answer your first question, Missy, regarding something like a nail salon or a hair salon, in order to practice those professions legally, whether you're in a home or a storefront, you have to be licensed. And you can't, you can't get a trade certificate from the town clerk unless you have all of your proper certifications, whatever they happen to be, professional licenses, the zoning permit, blah, 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 blah. So the control is not necessarily that zoning, the, the planning and zoning commission has the control. There are other controls built in that are not the purview of planning and zoning. And if, if I'm a business owner and I'm a, at least this is how I feel, the, the logic works. If I'm a good business owner and I become a successful business owner and I suddenly realize I cannot continue my business under the parameters under which it's been set up, my next move is to expand elsewhere.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Or else my, or else my business will fail, right? If I can't, if, if I can't grow it the way I intend to, then it will fail and that's a part of the life cycle of businesses.
But if you're allowed, if you're allowed to use your whole house, what is the incentive if your business gets too big to go and find another location in a commercial district? There's no incentive there.
Because if, if your business is big enough that, that you've outgrown the terms of the, the, the conditions of the, of the permit.
Not if you're allowed to have five chairs for a salon, you know, that's what a salon and a commercial, you know, they can have five, six chairs. If you're letting them use the whole house, it doesn't, if, if they pass all the state, state regulations and you're letting them use the whole house, they can have five, six chairs in their house.
Well, actually they could probably have three because we've limited them to three persons other than persons residing on the premises. So yeah, bigger than one, but not infinitely large.
Well, I have a question.
Mr. Wurge.
You have a home occupation and you're expanding your business. So rather than go into a business zone or an area where a business would, would be, I'll just add an addition on my house and I'll expand my business because I've made the house bigger. You said it's okay to have a home occupation with 90% or whatever percent of a building. I'll just make the building bigger. What's wrong with that? And now you're, now when I do that, I'm encumbering my neighbors because now I have this big business because I put, I put a big addition on my, on my house.
Would you be encumbering your neighbors if you put a big ugly residential addition on your house?
I don't think so. But if it was a business and I'm running a business, whether it's lawn mowers or hand grenades or whatever it is, a business should be in a business zone or a business area. I don't want anybody setting up manufacturing and they're calling it a home occup or whatever this rural thing is, rural business. It's so at a hand that you don't put a limit on.
Ms. Langlois, did you have a comment?
You're going to lose it.
I did. I guess it all just comes down to like whatever we say, if we say 50% and they do 75%, who's going to check? Who's going to check that out? Nobody, because our zoning officer.
The neighbors.
Maybe they'll call and they'll complain and then you'll have to go out. If we say 30% and they do 57%, then they're, you know what I mean? Like it's, it's all like.
That's what the CEO is there for.
Point, okay, so point of order, Gloria, whom did I seat for? Mr. Nelson?
I think it was Alvin, Joe.
Okay, Alvin Hill is seated for Randy Blackmer. Oh, you know what? Well, never mind. Okay, the motion on, the, the motion to be voted on is a 90% that up to 90% of the primary residence may be used for the home occupation. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Santos.
Brian Santos, no.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hill, yes.
Ms. Langlois.
No.
Mr. Krogo.
He's on mute.
Yeah.
Oh.
How's that?
Come back to him. Oh, there he is.
I'm sorry, yes.
Krogo, yes. Ms. DeRogers.
Yes.
Ms. DeRogers, yes. Ms. Chetel.
Christine Chetel, no.
Ms. Chetel, no. Mr. Wurge.
No.
Mr. Wurge, no. Mr. Lanky.
Don't be like, no.
Mr. Lanky, no. Mr. Nelson.
And I just asked, again, this is to allow a home business to use 90% of their home for the business. I'll say, Christopher Nelson, no.
Okay, Joseph Hurdy Brown, yes. The motion does not pass. I will entertain a motion regarding the percentage of primary residence to be allowed to be used for business under a home occupation.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Krogo.
I would like to make a motion at 75% home occupancy use.
Alvin Hill, seconds.
Motion has been made for 75%, seconded by Mr. Hill. I'm, if, if there's anyone who has anything specific to say about 75% as opposed to 90, I'll entertain it. Otherwise, I think it's probably best for us just to consider if we think 75% is appropriate and vote.
Oh, I'm against 75%. My max is 50. That's as far as I'll go.
I was going to say 65.
All right, well, let's see how this one goes and then we'll, we'll, we'll keep negotiating until we get to the level we need.
So hearing no further discussion, still will not.
I would like, I would like.
Mr. Hill.
Yes. You know, I'm not being facetious with 90% or 75% is to allow the homeowner some leeway. If everything is going to occur within the residence, even at 75%, they could have 10% of the bedroom being used, 15% of the basement being used. Who cares? That would just plow more work on the Z E O. I mean, if we say 75%, no one's going to have 75% of their house used as a business within that structure.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Hearing no further discussion, yes, sets 75% as the limit, no, rejects that limit. Mr. Santos.
Brian Santos, no.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Langlois.
No.
Mr. Nelson.
No. Christopher Nelson, no.
Mr. Krogo.
Mike Krogo, yes.
Ms. DeRogers.
Oh my God, I don't even know.
75%, Missy, just yes or no to 75%.
Oh, I'll go with.
No. Ms. Chetel.
Oh no.
Mr. Chairman, what was Missy's vote?
Uh, Missy voted no.
Thank you.
Christine voted no as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wurge.
No.
Mr. Lanky.
Don't be like, no.
Joseph Hurdy Brown, yes. The motion does not pass.
I make a motion that would say 65%.
I feel like I'm at a casino.
So I, um, so Mr. Santos and Ms. Langlois made motion simultaneously. Mr. Santos made a motion for 50%. Ms. Langlois made a motion for 65%.
Let's go in the middle.
I'll second, I'll second the motion for 50.
Uh, Mr. Nelson has, has seconded the motion for 50%.
I'll second the motion for 65%.
One motion in time, Paul.
Uh, yeah, okay, so, so we're going to go back.
What happened to 65? That's gone?
Well, both, yeah, see, this is hard. This is the issue of, of meetings in a virtual reality.
Yeah.
So don't you have to take the mo, the, the motion that was made?
Just take them incrementally, Joe, since they were made simultaneously and both, and both seconded, just take them incrementally.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion being made by Ms. Langlois, seconded by Mr. Krogo, is for 65%. Mr. Santos.
Brian Santos, 50%.
So you are now.
That's not the vote ahead of you.
I thought it was 50 or 65 at this junction. 65, no, no, sorry, Charlene.
Yes.
Ms. Langlois.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Uh, Christopher Nelson, no.
Mr. Krogo.
Mike Krogo, yes.
Ms. DeRogers.
Missy DeRogers, yes.
Ms. Chetel.
Christine Chetel, yes.
Mr. Wurge.
No.
Mr. Lanky. No, Mr. Lanky, no?
Yes, no.
Joseph Hurdy Brown, yes. So that's a 6-4 in favor of 65%.
Which shall be.
Can I make a suggestion here?
Yes.
We've spent an hour on this. Do you think, do you trust Tyra and I to sit down with the, the rest of the language and to work it into what you sort of agreed on and talked about here instead of spending more time on this? I mean, what do you think of that idea, Tyra?
Uh, well, I think almost everything is resolved now anyway. I think the only open question, Joe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is to accept or reject the concept of the neighborhood limited enterprise. And there are a couple of changes that I'll make. I'll move the activities or storage associated, yada, yada, down into.
You don't have a definition, you don't have a definition for that.
The definition is the parameters.
Make a motion.
Mr. Wurge.
Oh my God.
To exclude that nonsense, rule, whatever.
And Mr. Wurge has moved to remove the second tier of business known as rural business or limited neighborhood enterprise from our draft. Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, the motion is not recognized.
Chairman?
Yes.
On that vote, the 65% vote, it was going so fast and people were identifying themselves that I didn't get it. Could you clarify? I, I have Brian Santos, no. Charlene Langley, yes. Christopher Nelson, no. Could you clarify? I, I have Brian Santos, no. Charlene Langley, yes. Christopher Nelson, no. Mike Krogo, yes. Missy DeRozier, yes. Charlene Chetel, yes. Bob Wurge, no. John Lenke, no. And Joe, I didn't get your vote.
So I voted yes and Alvin voted yes.
Alvin, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms.
And what did we do with the other vote, the 50% vote, just not recognized?
Well, we didn't need it.
Yeah, it, it became a
Lost in space.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was moot.
Superseded by the 65% vote. Um, okay, so, so with that, I'm going to assume that the commission consensus is to keep in that second tier of business. And so with that, yeah, if that's agreeable to Tara and Cindy to keep working on that. I think that's great. Okay?
Yep.
I got it. You got it.
That I am going to absent myself from the meeting. Tara, will you handle the
Yep, so Joe, Joe has to exit the meeting and so we don't have any other officers. There's the, what, what Robert's rules permits you to do is to designate a chairman pro tem just for this and the commission just has to agree on who that person is.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Does that come in the form, form of a motion?
Um, that's an excellent question. I don't think it generally is because usually it happens at the beginning of a meeting when there is no officer or chair.
Okay.
You wanna take it, Brian?
Me? I thought, I, that's why I was just asking, because I didn't know if you, you were allowed to do it, Tara. That's where I just
No, no, I can guide the discussion, but a, a commissioner has to essentially open motions, that kind of thing, adjourn, but the, the discussion guide I can handle, that's no big deal.
Brian, Tara is correct in Robert's Rules of Order, because I, I read it too, so. It, it, it's on the basis of all of us that are on this meeting right now, we can say, okay, Brian, will you be willing to be the vice chair or chair of this, of this particular meeting tonight so it can continue on? And then on the consensus of the people, of the people on this meeting, you could be the guy that leads the group, so. Did anybody understand that, I hope? But it should be done, but it's just for this specific meeting, so we don't, you know, so everything is still without. It'll, it'll be going to Robert's Rules of Order. So I make, I'll, I'll make the motion if Brian, if Brian Santos do, be the leader for the evening.
I'll second it.
Who made the motion?
Me.
John Lenke.
I'm sorry, John.
Mike Krogo, seconds.
Okay, is that it then?
I think you can do an all in favor, just, I don't think you need a, a roll call voice vote for that one.
Okay, I'll do it. I'll just say, okay, if everybody, anybody, everybody in favor just say aye one at a time. So they, they could record that, who said aye.
Charlene Langley, aye.
Alvin Hill, aye.
Christopher Nelson, aye.
Mike Krogo, aye.
All right, Missy.
Missy DeRozier?
You're on, you're on mute.
Oh, is she on mute? Let me find her here.
Wait, sorry, Missy DeRozier's aye. Sorry.
Yeah, that's it anyway.
Christine Chetel.
Okay.
Christine Chetel, aye.
Um, well, John B. Lenke will say aye too. And you don't have, you don't have to vote, Mr. Santos.
But you may.
No.
Did we cover everybody?
So Brian, as, just as a, for, for flow, if we have any further votes, because, because of the Zoom thing, just call out each commissioner for their vote. That's the other thing that Joe's been doing and that's just specific to the Zoom thing because we can't go around a table.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I was keeping track here, so I'll, I'll
Okay.
All right, so let's, I just wanna make sure I'm covering everything here, so. Go ahead, John. Okay. All right, Tara, so that takes us through what we got. I'm just going back up to the top here and we've been an hour and 17 minutes deep here. I'm, I'm kinda lost of where we are here, but, so I just wanted I went all the way back up to the top, so page 49, I think we're all set, right? Let's just go through it real quick here.
Yep.
Page 50, I think we're all set here as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, 51, so my only question
We're all set, that, go ahead.
My, my only question, I, I wanted just to conclude on this with, with Sue there on. So I'm on page 51, Article 5A, Section 2, Trailers and Mobile Homes. We, we did talk about the 14 days continuous or nights, days or nights during an annual period from April 1st to December 31st. And Cindy was bringing it up that, you know, you could come in for two days and then come back a couple of weeks later, you know, and, and say that, that it was my, my 14 days started over again. I, I just wanted to talk about the word continuous. Can we just say 14 days and even actually take out nights? So it's just 14 days for April 1 through December 31st.
Yeah, I think that's how it's worded currently. I'll, I'll tell you what my problem was with that is that 14 days, 14 days, there's 365 days in a year. Are you gonna tell a property owner that they can use their property for 14 days of a year?
Yeah.
So there might be a better way to phrase it than this.
Tara, one term 14 day period, one term.
So, but then I, I, I think the issue is not whether it's 14 days, Alvin, it's what's the period in between until it refreshes the 14 days?
That's correct. It's, the word refresh is a good one.
I mean, by saying one term, continuous 14 day period within the, the framework, that's it.
So you're suggesting that we should only allow 14 days of use of a person's property?
Well, why are we even using the term 14 days?
Well, that's more or less cribbed from what you have in place now. What I didn't like about the language, the way it's written, is that the implication is that you can only use that property for 14 days a year because of the way it's phrased.
Right.
So the, so that seems like quite a burden for the commission to put on a property owner to say you get 14 out of 365 days. I think it's reasonable to say, to set a 14 day term, as you say, but those terms must have some buffer. Is it 14 days in a calendar month? You can be there two mu- two weeks out of, out of a given month in the season that it's permitted? Maybe that's the solution. But 14 out of 365 days, if you own a piece of property, that seems like a very high burden to telling people how much they get to use their stuff.
I agree with you, Tara.
I would be too happy.
I wouldn't. What's wrong with December 31st? What's wrong with that? Just drop the 14 days, caca.
Well, you wanna leave it open so that they can be there for eight continuous months? Because if we drop the term, then we're giving them permission to use it openly, April 1st to December 31st, if we're using this and just dropping that, that designation.
This is about a dwelling having a camper on it and someone living there.
Correct, correct, correct. Essentially, it's to accommodate for people who own properties that they're using as vacation properties. They're putting their RVs, their, you know, what, their, their campers on their property. I mean, we all know there's plenty of properties too small to build something on, but people buy them because they want to enjoy the property and the way that they are currently able to do it is with a recreational vehicle or a trailer of some kind. So as it's currently written, not in my, not in our draft, as it's currently written, it just says 14 days. And without any other improvement to that language, the implication, whether it's observed or not, is that that is 14 days out of a calendar year.
And so what, what do I, what does the one say now, the one, the, the draft we're working on now? That says the 14 continuous days or nights?
The, the full sentence is, "No such trailer or vehicle shall be occupied as a permanent dwelling, nor shall any such trailer or vehicle be occupied on one property for more than 14 continuous days or nights during the annual period from April 1st to December 31st. Such vehicles may be stored without being occupied in any district."
So we're saying that they own a piece of property and through the months of April and December, you only get to stay there 14 days?
No, as it's currently written, it's 14 continuous days.
Yeah.
So 14 continuous days, I go home for
Two days, you come back.
A week, two days, three, and then you can come back. So Cindy has suggested that that's too open and she's probably right.
That, that's what my problem was, was it? Because you can leave on the 13th day and can come back two days later. My 14 day period starts over again. That was
That's exactly
So sh- so should we make it 14 days out of a month? A calendar month?
No.
Why use it?
Okay, yeah, John, John Lenke, go ahead.
Personally, I think we should, I think the 14 days should totally be eliminated because I am a fifth wheeler, I got a trailer, I store it here on my property. But if I wanted to take it to a property, say like at a lake or something, that aquatic lake, if I wanna put it there, because it can only be open from April 1st to December 31st, because you're gonna be, anybody is crazy to keep it there unoccupied, that'd have problems. But if I wanna go there and spend 30 days in any given time in that good weather, I should be allowed. You're telling me that. I can only go there for 14 days out of a month, doesn't matter in April, in March, um, April, May, June, July, August, September, right up to December, but I can only use 14 days out of the month when I got this machine, this rig sitting here and I can go down there and spend 30 days if I want with the family or whatever, or, or have parties with a bunch of people. And, and you're limiting me? Now, I, I, I think the 14 days should be thrown right out the window. April 1st, December 31st, if they come and go, that's their prerogative. They're paying taxes, you're paying taxes on the, on the fifth wheeler and you gotta be paying taxes on the property you own. Now, all the other stuff, the health stuff, the health, the, or the N D D H, whatever, wow, that's a different jurisdiction. I just agree. I think the 14 days, throw it out the window.
Okay, did Bob Wurge, did you have something to say about this too? I thought I heard your voice.
Yeah, what I was gonna bring up, we allow, if my house burns down, I can put a trailer on the lot, a mobile, whatever, and rebuild my house and live in that trailer. Now, I, you certainly can't build a house in 14 days.
Yeah, no, there's
That's actually, that's a second, a separate provision, Bob. This is about camping trailers or travel, vacation or recreation. Yep.
I'm sorry, camping trailers, okay.
The next bit is that about, you know, temporary dwelling or building your house and longer the per
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, John.
What Mr. Wurge has, had just said is correct. We had an incident, some, like an incident of that sort when Greg Lee and I think Mr. Wurge should, might remember it like me, we have our moments, that there was a house that burnt out, the people came to the, to the, to the Z E O at the time. I, I can't even know, it could have been Alvin Hill, I believe he was in at the time, when Greg Lee was still the super, uh, was the chair, to come in and get a permit, put a trailer, a fifth wheeler, which it was, on the property so they could be there when the house is being torn down. Now, if they, they never rebuild, that's on them, but they were living in a trailer and they got a one year, a one, one year thing that never said. That is okay. I agree with that. But if that, because that's considered an emergency or for whatever reason, that ha- that's another issue, like Tara said, that's been another, another issue, but let's just stick with that hint. 14 days, take it out the window and then go from April to December. They wanna be there for 30 days one month, next month they're only there 20 days, or 15, or two, or three, that's their business. You know, we're, we're starting to be victorial here. Anyway, that's
Go ahead, Alvin. Thank you, John.
The other thing is if we're separating the two situations or environments, one being camping and one being the, the, the instance that John just mentioned, why is that under the same section? Shouldn't it be a separate, separate section? Like section
Well, no, their, their uses for trailers, so one of them addresses recreational uses for trailers and one of them is more of a utilitarian use and
Right.
Because they're, because it's the same object, it's just the same object used differently.
Those should have two different definitions. I apologize for stepping in.
No problem, John. Go ahead, Alvin.
I think that the word we're missing here is contiguous, which means if we have a 30 day contiguous system within that eight month period, they could have three days here, four days there, one day here, two days there.
I, I think John will find that, that any specific numeric limitation within the allowable, allowable period is, is more than he's, than he cares for. Is that right, John?
Yeah, I mean, you, you're telling me I can only be two days here, three days there, you know, come on. You know, I mean, you know, I, I'll go along with the, with the rule book, but you know, when you start telling me I can't be at someplace that I own, I own the, I own the rig and you're gonna tell me I can only do 14 days this or whatever, or continuous and leave for two days and come back, that's
Contiguous, it's a big difference.
It, it's, it's just a matter of degree, Alvin. If I may, I think the main reason for including that was premised on the idea that N D D H does in fact have, have guidelines for septic on trailers and Sue Starkey came in and said that they don't. So I think that that has obviated some of the reasons for concern that put the 14 day provision in there. It's still a season that is described.
Go ahead, Alvin.
I just gonna say eliminate, eliminate, just
Eliminate it, I agree, Alvin.
Throw it out.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that. Does that satisfy everybody?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
Mr. Hill, Mr. Wurge, correct. It, it should be the responsibility of the person like me to take care of the sanitation. So if I, if there's, if, if I have a septic, let's just say I had a septic system. It's my responsibility to tie my trailer in to make sure that I'm within state of health code. Now, if I don't have a septic system, then it's the responsibility of me to get a hold of, of earthworks or N and R septic system or something and they, and find out if, about putting a portage on in, which is according to that young lady from N D D H, said that's perfectly legal. Or they have these systems now that you put them in, they're above the ground, they tie it into your trailer and it, and it is the way, they come in once a month, they'll last up to 30 days, they come in once a month and they clean it up. That, if you wanna try to get into the regulation, I'm for that. But I just, you know, that 14 days, everything else, the health thing is the response, should be responsibility of me, the guy that owns the property or the trailer and to destroy it. That's how I look at it.
I, I think we've got good consensus there to just strike the 14 and, and
Okay.
and leave it as a season.
All right, we'll strike it out.
Yeah, leave it April 1 to, uh, December 31st, right?
That's fine. All right, strike the 14 days.
Eliminate the 14 days and camping, right?
Yep, it, it is, it is done.
Can I just interfere, ask one question? Why, why to December 31st? I mean, that is not the Can I just interfere, uh, ask one question? Why, why to December 31st? I mean, that is not the, um, vacation season on the lake. Uh, just out of curiosity. I don't really care, but.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may again, um, uh, Cynthia, there are people that sometimes have been out there till December 31st because they, you know, they had no other place to go and they went on their way to Florida or whatever.
Okay.
Where my ice fish.
So, so, you know, what are you gonna do? Tell them they're gonna be out here on 31st if you want to put that in, so be it. But, uh, that is been your normal, what they call camping season, April 1st, December 31st, then everybody flies south.
All right. Snowbirds. Okay. I got it.
Okay. All right. We're striking and we're moving on. All right. Page 51, Article 5A, Section 2, Trailers in Mobile Homes, Item 6.
Move on.
So this one is going to just remain as is, uh,
Yep.
Change with this one.
What's, uh, um, about the, uh,
Yeah, this is about what you brought up for a temporary dwelling on the safer register.
As is, sure.
Yep.
All right. Page 70, Article 5B, Design, 5B, Section 1, Conservation Subdivisions.
Um, so the first question there was submitted by Bernie Davis about what happens if we include this item. Uh, and there is some conflict. I had actually sent a, a question to Rich Roberts to clarify that further. I just happened to check my email and it came in in the meantime, since I left the office. Uh, and the answer is, one of the answers that I suspected to be the case. The commission can vote to modify specific provisions of the subdivision regulations where conflict is created ahead of a total rewrite. So if there are items that we identify and he identified two potential ones, um, then you can modify, you know, spot modify them until the whole rewrite happens. So that's a solvable problem.
Okay. As long as everybody's okay with that being in there, I don't see any problem with it. So it sounds.
Yeah. Well, Cindy did ask why it's in there and, um, I had specifically asked that of John because I had the same thought. Why are we addressing any kind of subdivision in the plain vanilla regulations? His response to me was that you have to, if you have them, you have to refer to them in your zoning regulations. So that is why they were left in.
Okay, fine. All right, moving on. Page 70, Article 5B, Design, Article 5B, Section 1, Conservation Subdivisions, Reduction of Minimum Lot Size. No action needed. Is that still the case, Tira?
Yeah. I mean, Cindy asked the question is why is a reduction of lot size allowed? And that is actually exactly what a conservation subdivision is. It's a permission to have lot sizes below the normal allowable minimum so that they can be clustered together and allow for a specific preservation of open, a larger preservation of open space.
Okay.
So it is, it, it is the exact function of a cluster or conservation subdivision.
Okay, very good. All right. Next one, page 70, Same Section, Interior Lots in Subdivisions, talking about flag lots. Uh, the stacking of flag lots. So it's just one, I believe.
Right.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, please, Carolyn.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Um, it's really misplaced in the conservation subdivision. It, the, the idea of one flag lot. The one flag lot should be every place else.
Yeah.
In a conservation subdivision, it kind of, you know, in and of itself, it intrinsically allows for wildlife corridors, et cetera.
Yeah, it should be in all zoning districts, in my opinion. That would.
Yeah. Um, so it should be, let me, let me just clarify, cause this has always been an odd placement. It's, it's floated around in the, in the draft a couple of places. So do we agree that where it belongs, let me find my correct spot in the draft, would be in Article 4, Zoning Districts, not in any specific districts, but in the general description of districts as like general provisions. Does that make sense?
I don't know if you, uh.
Um, yes, yes, it does make sense because you don't want it limited only to subdivisions.
Yeah.
I mean, because some people will, will want to divide their property if they're entitled to.
I would agree.
Okay. So I will move that there and I think that solves the logic problem. Okay.
Okay.
That makes perfect sense. Okay. Section 2, Same Article, Section 2, Low Impact Development. Uh,
You on page 71, Brian?
Yes, I am, Bob. Uh, Marla Butts made a strong recommendation, so I believe that we should just follow what Ms. Butts has outlined. It seems like that was what's going to be happening here about the, um,
Yep, yep.
Stormwater management being combined. So that's.
Yeah, they were developed separately. Um, but if, if she believes that they should, uh, be combined, it's no big deal. It just, it makes one long section, but that's not a problem.
Sounds good. All right. Article 5B, Section 4, Erosion and Sediment Control. Uh, I think the long and the short of, of this one, I read this one earlier, was just asking for a cash or surety bond specifically for erosion and sediment control. Completion. I can't think of a site that wouldn't be like doing residential home or some other process. I guess I'll just put it this way. I don't know why you would not, why would you do erosion and sediment control only on a site? Something else is going to be happening there that you would get your surety or cash bond on. So I, I, I'll, I'll pose it as a question to the group.
So Brian, you're saying that the logic is that it's not an item that would itself be bonded?
Correct. Cause I feel like something else is already bonded that would require that to be completed.
Okay.
Didn't we, uh, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, didn't we just go through that? I think with, uh, what's that, uh, development, Madison?
Yep.
Madison, Madison Ave, where we had all the problems with erosion and all this stuff and he came, he was coming in to try to get the road, uh, so release the road to the town so it could, he could whatever. And none of, none of this stuff was actually met. And that's when we increased his barn big time.
Yep.
Which I thought was not yet. But I think you're on the right path with that. Uh, my feeling is, is if they cannot get the situation under control on whatever circumstances, uh, it should be almost like a cease and desist until the, the problem is rectified. That's my feeling. I could be wrong. Correct me.
So let me just understand this properly. So let's just use gravel mining operations again, right? Everyone's favorite topic. So if we ask for a surety or cash bond on gravel mining operations, would we also request the cash or surety bond on their erosion and sediment control? Like an additional one?
No, I don't. I know. That could be included. That should be included right up front, right, right away.
Yep.
That's automatic.
So they're, so they're agreeing with your logic, Brian?
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
On pocket, on, like a subdivision or somebody trying to put a road in or whatever he wants to do on it, you know, then this is where we then, we have had some problems in the past is that we had no control over like, you know, uh, what they're gonna take to fix it. And then he's coming in and says, well, I want to do this. Well, you didn't fix your first problem and it just seems to magnify. So we have to put a stop someplace at something and say, okay, you want to do this, I don't care what you want to put a subdivision, if you want to do it, knock yourself out. But you need control the areas first to continue.
Very good job.
Otherwise, they keep walking in on it and keep trying to walk over it. End of discussion.
Understood. All right. Mr. Wirth, go ahead.
Uh, Carolyn, I just, I just wanted to say, I think that the Madison Avenue problem that, that occurred points up, points up the fact that you really have to have the bonding right to begin with. And I don't think it was. You know, that, that wasn't calculated properly and, and it wasn't set properly. And so there were problems down the road. So I think now is the time to make those corrections.
Thank you.
But are you suggesting, Carolyn, that we should have a separate bond for erosion and sediment control?
No, I'm not. But if, you know, that was a big subdivision and the whole project should have been properly addressed, you know, the, the question of what bond would be necessary should have been properly addressed at the approval point rather than so many years later when things will let go.
I agree.
Right.
All right. I think it's, go ahead, John.
Well, I, I, I want to thank Mrs. Wirth. That's probably the way I was trying to get it across is that we need, again, we need to have something up front and say, okay, nothing goes further. Let's get the barn in. This is the problem. This is what it's gonna cost. It's a hundred thousand dollars. You put up the hundred thousand, we got the money to cover whatever. So if we have to go back, we have to go and do something about it. We got the money there. This is the problem with that. We've been underdeflating ourselves on our barns on everything. So we need to get a happy balance both ways.
Okay. All right. Very good. I, I think we're all in agreement that this is combined with other bonding or sureties and, uh, a specific erosion, sediment control bond is not required. Are we, are we on agreement with that? I think that's good, right?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Very good. Page 80, Article 5B, Section 5, Stormwater Management and Design, Letter E, Stormwater Detention Structures. I don't believe there's anything to be dealt with here. Is that correct, Tira?
No, no, you're all set. I, I have, uh, Attorney Roberts' response and it was satisfactory to me to, to leave it as it was.
Okay. All right. Next one, 80, Page 81, Article 5B, Same Area, Easements and Rights to Drain.
No change.
This one about.
Yeah, I just have a little, a little edit that I think will make it a little clearer. Said easements shall be submitted to the town for review by the commission and by council before any approval shall be granted. Marla's question was, you know, approval of what and by whom, kind of a thing.
All right. That sounds fair to me. The group have any comments on this one? Seems pretty straightforward.
Well, that, uh, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, what, what, what you just saw was there, okay, Marla Butts, final approval, what? Okay, the zoning approval, town acceptance of the road or insurance. It's just gonna relate right back to Madison, Madison Ave there or whatever. That point right there, right there, certificate of compliance, occupancy and approval. Okay? Uh, we need to get a, a better handle on that. So, you know, I mean, be more specific about that too.
I, I think, I think we're covering that because it says, said easement shall be submitted to us for review by the commission. And then before any approval shall be granted. So I think that's being accomplished, John.
Okay. All right. I'm just trying to get my thoughts in, that's all.
No problem. All right. Next one is easements and rights to drain. Again, does not seem like there's any action to be done here. Is that right, Tira?
That is correct.
All right. And then the next one, Handicap Parking Spaces on Page 82.
Uh, I think that was Cindy just wondering what the correct citation was. Is that right, Cindy?
Yes, it is. I think if you're gonna quote something, you have to put what the, where it's at. Yes.
Okay. All right. So I have the correct one.
Fine. Yeah, that sounds appropriate. Okay, very good. Page, page 83, Article 5B, Section 6, Parking Standards. Again, something about the driveway ordinance. Seems like there's no action here to be taken. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Page 86, Article 5B, Section 7, Signs. Something about lighting fixtures illuminated signs to be downcast, imshielded. I don't think there's anything here. We talked.
Yeah, it's just, it's just adding the term downcast, uh, as a, as a specific, which I think is reasonable.
Yep. I think that's appropriate.
Yep. Excellent.
All right. Page 86, Article 5B, Signs Again. All right. What's this?
Flags.
Flags.
And, and my comment was related to the fact that has nothing to do with displaying, you know, American flag, Connecticut flag or whatever. It has to do with, are, are we gonna be doing the separation of those types of flags from a store putting up a flag wherever, whenever, however they want? That's what I meant by that comment is, you know, um, there's really no definition of flags. So how do you want to handle advertising flags? Flags are advertised.
Advertising, advertising is protected speech.
No, no. I mean, a store, a, a store, you, a store could have five or six flags hanging off their, their property. There's.
It'd just be like a sale flag.
Yeah, sale flag, open flag, um, whatever.
As soon as you start talking about content, you're talking about speech.
No, no, I'm not talking about speech. I'm talking about a flag.
You are, you are talking about speech. I've already run this by the attorney. You cannot control the content of a flag.
No.
So whether it says sale here, church service here, flag of nations, go patriots, you can't control the content of a flag.
I don't think she's talking about a con, Tara, she's not talking about the content of a flag. She's talking about flags in general. Big whipping things that are out into the highway, you know, the, the doll that goes up and down and swishes all over. Do you want 75 of them on a business? Do you want one? Can they, do they stay out all night? Do they have to be taken in? She's not, not the wordage, the flags.
What does our current regulation say on flags? Do we have anything?
Oh, I'll have to go to the book. Hold on.
I don't think so.
Bear with me.
That's fine. I'll ask another question. Cindy, how many, how many times have we been challenged on this word flag and what people put up?
We, I haven't, I have not been challenged on anything, um, on signs, flags or anything. But then on the other hand, the town of Thompson is a very polite town. They're not, they don't, the stores, with the exception of probably your liquor stores and your convenience stores, people are, are not abusive of the sign or flag regulations in town, truthfully.
I think, I think based upon the no problem history, I think we can just leave flags as is.
No, I disagree. The more businesses you have coming in, you might have, um, issues with it. Like Charlie said.
I kind of agree with that. I mean, I'm a business. I wa, I have the United States flags on my deck. I have an open flag on my deck. But I do it kind of strategically, methodically. I like a nice, clean look. But what about the person that comes in and does like starts plopping flags all over the place?
Exactly.
And then it's messy looking. Like, I think right now we don't have to worry about it. There's not many businesses. They don't really go gung ho. But I think if we're gonna allow that, I want it to look nice. I don't want it to look cheap and cheesy. So maybe if we have something in there about flags that, you know, you, kind of like they would have to tell us what are they thinking? And if they, I know, I think at one meeting, Mr. Wirth, when the Dollar General was going in and Mr. Rice, they were like, they didn't want stuff plastered all near, close to the road. It, it gets kind of messy looking. I mean, the Cumberland Farms used to have like a lot going on. The grinder store across some LBs, that is like totally overwhelming. Like it could be nice and done right. So I don't certainly want to live in any business to not, um, say that they have a business. But I think it does have to kind of be somewhat clean looking and not like a mess.
In the liquor store, the shopping.
I'm just gonna toss, I'm just gonna toss this out there and you guys can discuss it as you like. So the, the full item here is, you know, the following types of signs are exempt from obtaining a permit. And flags is one of the types of signs identified as exempt from obtaining a permit. So in trying to control the number of flags as types of signs, the implication of this conversation is that you would need a permit for one. And I don't, I think that's a weird one.
I don't necessarily, I don't want, I don't think I want a permit because that's money. Do you know what I mean? So now we're taxing, you know, getting them for money for a sign or a flag. I'm just saying maybe if they could show us what they're thinking and, you know, and why, I'm gonna put 87 flags on and you're like, whoa, 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 whoa. Like, how about we compromise and you do 20? Cause 87 is a lot. So, like work with me. And I mean, I could be way off and you're like, okay, let's tone it down some. And then I could walk out putting five flags strategically nice and feel like, oh, all right, that, oh, okay, 87 might've been a lot, but I got five and it looked. got five and it looks nice, and they let me do it, like, workable.
Okay, so, so what you do is, is the way it's said, defined, you need a definition of what is freedom of speech and flags, and then you need a definition of flags advertising businesses, so that's what you need.
It has to look like Nazi.
Just real quick, Mr. Krogel, go ahead, sir.
If, if I was running a business, and I wanted to put out fifty flags, and I'm thinking that it's very attractive, and other people think it is not, then I really don't, going to come for the business in the first place, I mean, if, if it looks like a shoddy thing going on, like, you know, I don't want to say pawn shops or something, or something that of low, lower level maybe, people are going to avoid that area, and not the area, but that store anyways.
Yeah, I tend to-
Whereas if they have something attractive, like three, four, five flags that, you know, are all symmetric and everything else, people will think that's really cool, but to tell somebody they can't put up flags or signs, I don't know.
Go, go back to what Charlene said, and the re, and, and the, the appearance of your business, the appearance of your town, do you want all these businesses, I mean, Charlene could absolutely have fifty flags up there on her fence, she could.
Plus fifty.
Is that what you want for your business?
If she had fifty flags up on her fence, I probably would not go in there.
I know, but then, you might not, but what about the person driving through, they drive through and they're like, oh my word, like, look at this town, there's like flags everywhere, you know what I mean?
And they'll keep right on going.
I mean, this might be another, this might be another solution in search of a problem, um, I, I have looked up, uh, I, I have looked up flags and zoning regulations, very little comes up, I'm here in Leavenworth, Washington, where they have the following, the following stipulations, no more than three flag poles, towers, or similar structures shall be allowed per parcel or lot, no more than three flags may be mounted vertically and/or displayed on each flag pole, tower, or similar structure located on a parcel or lot, furcaded poles with multiple mounting structures shall not be allowed, I don't even know what that is, small flags not to exceed twenty-four square feet, mounted instants on the faces, eaves of buildings and flags which are displayed flush to the face of the building are not limited in number, would you like me to crib that?
Well, are you, are you reading that?
Yes.
And what, what flags are allowed in a business, in a commercial zone with a business, is that what you're reading, or is that just something general?
This is just a subsection of this community's sign regulations, specific to flags, a quick Google search reveals almost nothing on this, this is, this is the only thing I was able to come up with here.
Well, can we change the number to five, because I have, I think, five or six American flags.
Sure, babe. No, my point is, is separate the flags that are right by, by your constitutional rights, which is your right to have the flag, the American flag, or the state of Connecticut flag, or Confederate flag if you want it, that's your constitutional right, it's the advertising flags.
Advertising flags are also speech, Cindy, they can't be regulated.
Well, then, then, then why are we regulating signs?
I don't-
Because that's speech, too.
We shouldn't be.
We're regulating dimensions and physical characteristics, not content, when you say advertising, that implies content, that is, that is a fact of settled law, we cannot say that you can or cannot have an advertising flag.
All right, sounds like your attorney already addressed that issue, I, I, Missy, you had something that you wanted to say, and then I'll hit up John Lankie, you're all set, Missy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Charlene hit the nail on the head, I mean, you go by her place, she's got the place set up nicely with flags, it's not over the flags, if you got a, an, an, a, an X amount, it becomes a distraction, especially if you're driving by, her place, you can drive by bike, and you know the flag today, and you're not paying that much attention, but you know her business is open, if you're going to do this with everybody down the road, a guy down the street decides to put up twenty flags, you come around a corner, you got twenty flags, first thing you're looking at is twenty flags, your eyes are off the road, it becomes a distraction, Charlene's got the point, let's just keep it to a minimum, uh, Tara's got the other point, uh, it becomes a speech, if you're going to use advertisement on them, that becomes under the speech thing or whatever, just, let's just keep it, the business flat, or sign.
All right, John, thank you, Bob, did you have something to add to this?
Yeah, you know, um, yeah, I do, um, we're hearing, and I appreciate Tara looking up all those flags and all that, but we're hearing so many variations and degrees and suggestions, uh, I, I would like to just suggest that we leave flags as flags at the, uh, at the discretion of the CEO, uh, to decide, uh, the appropriateness of a flag, and if, wait, 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 let me finish, if somebody doesn't like the CEO's decision, remember, the CEO works for the commission, but if somebody doesn't like her decision, or his, or her decision, they go to the ZBA, and appeal her decision, because there's too many variables, you can't, you can't put a, you can't put a number on them, I mean.
What do you think, Cindy? What do you think of that, Cindy?
I mean, what we have as CEO to do is to use some discretion.
You okay with that, Cindy?
What was, sure.
Well, he's the same, you, it's up to you to make the decision.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying, is, is, but if I say to the person, well, you can only have three flags, and then they say, well, the street has five, and I say, well, that's non-conformity to the regulation.
No, that, that would be obviously-
Guys, I think that this is a solution in, in search of a problem right now, I, 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 I think we are creating a pinch, a, a potential problem that has not been demonstrated to actually exist.
Oh, it is a problem.
However-
Carrie, it's a problem in other communities, it's a big problem, it was a big problem in Putnam, when I was in Putnam, so it is a problem, it's just that you probably have more respectful business people in, in the town of Thompson that don't want to make their properties ridiculous.
All right, let, let me, go ahead, Charlene.
Cindy, what is Putnam's, like, do you know, like, because I, I feel like sometimes some of theirs is even out of control, like, when I drive by, like, but it, it kind of looks messy to me, is there a limit, or?
Charlene, it was, it was so totally out of control when I was, um, CEO, it was unreal, totally out of control, I have no idea what their regs are now, they changed their regs.
Let's cut to the chase here.
All right, well, I've, I've, I've emailed those to myself, those, those parameters.
Yep.
And if there's something that you can regulate, it's going to be about sizes and numbers, types, content, out of bounds, sizes and number, that's, that's what you're going to be limited to.
Yeah, I was-
I don't, I don't think that's applicable, did, did he check me?
Go ahead, Bob.
No, I, I don't agree with Tara in regards to that, because if you've got a big building, you want a big flag, if you've got a small building, you want a small flag, so.
I'm not saying you should regulate the size, Bob, I'm saying that those are the, those are the things that you're limited to in your, in your authority, is size or number?
I'm, I'm very strong for the CEO to decide whether a flag is appropriate where it is, and where the-
What will it be based on?
No.
I mean, you have to have some kind of authority, regulation, give, give authority.
Uh, will the commission give authority, can, can the commission give the CEO authority to make a judgment in terms of, uh, flags, whether they're appropriate or not?
You can, but they have to be based on something, so, so, the, the, the basis on which, the basis on which the CEO can reasonably make a determination, essentially could be based on size or number.
All right, I, I thi, I think we should be doing, uh, what Tara has outlined, with the limitation of five flags or approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission, just to give a little bit of a room for, like Bob just outlined, if it's a bigger building, we can look at a different flag, can we, can we do that?
Sure.
Why not?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Alvin.
There's one other issue we should consider, and that's placement, do we want it on town property, the edge of the road, most of the problem with any of those waving advertising signs is that they're right on the edge of the road, so we could have-
Good point, Alvin.
That's a great point.
We could have a number of flags plus the distance from town property.
Yeah, or anything.
Okay, I think I can come up with something there.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Let's move on.
One hour to go, guys, and I think we've, we've got a decent shot of moving through this.
Okay, page 87, Article 6, Zoning Board of Appeals, does not look like there's anything for us to take action on here, something about-
Correct, same thing with the next item.
All right, page 89, Article 7, Definitions, oh, what fun, um, what do we got here, I don't even know what, there's a lot to read here.
So you've got a bunch of suggestions, uh, some of which come up from more than one person, um, Marla really wanted a, a refinement of, um, or an addition of street or road frontage in addition to lot frontage, uh, and I talked to her about that today, so I would generally agree with that, um, and I think we can consider that separately. So Cindy and Al Landry both made a number of suggestions, um, many of them, as I read them, and, and I know certainly to be the case, uh, in Al Landry's suggestions, because he described his logic to me at great length, many of these items were included in prior, in the prior edition of the regulations, some of them, if not all of them, were at one time included in this draft, and our attorney recommended taking out anything that was not referred to in the draft, so body art, carnivals, commercial recreation establishment, these are things that do not appear in the draft, so the, the purpose of defining them in a glossary for a text is questionable, there are things here that do occur in this draft that probably could use entries, uh, the ones that I pulled out based on the lists from Cindy and Al were alcoholic beverages, although it is defined in the special provision, but that's okay, uh, downcast lighting, street or road frontage, hours of operation, motel, uh, noise was one that came up that we actually took out because we sort of took out references to it, soil, subdivision, open space conservation, use and yard, I'm actually not positive that yard occurs in the text, but it may, um, the other items, retaining them does not refer to anything that we've proposed, so we can add any of them back in, but I would just, I, I, we took them out specifically based on the advice of the attorney, because they don't refer to anything.
So my question is on this, uh, well, first is a comment, and then a question, I would agree that if we do not refer to it in the body of the zoning regulations, I don't think we should have a definition for it, now with that said, my question back to the group is, if we do not have a definition for it, are there other, like, zoning board of appeals definitions that someone could look up and say, okay, this is what the definition is, like a state guideline or something that could be, you know, related to our zoning regs? Like, the, the same yard, so if we don't miss body art, can someone else go to the state of Connecticut and look up what body art means and make a reasonable assumption about what that means in accordance to our regulations?
Well-
The assumption is that you would be regulating a body art establishment specifically, and we're not doing that, but body art, like a nail salon or a hair salon, is something that if you're practicing it professionally, you have to be licensed by whatever governing bodies, health, health departments, if there's a professional association, so there was at one time an assumption that body art somehow represented a vice, and it sort of trickles along as a thing that people single out as being uniquely problematic, but it's just a business.
Yep, yep, okay.
But, you know, like I said, we can add any of these back in that the commission would like to add, uh, but if they are not in the text, I would be curious as to the justification.
Well, since I don't know specifically which ones, uh, are in or out of the regulations, I'm okay with, as long as the group is okay with allowing you, Tara, to go through them and use your judgment on entering in the definitions that are required for us, as long as the group is okay.
Okay, I mean, Cindy, did you have any specific points on any of these specific items, because your met, your list doesn't exactly match up to Al's.
I'll unmute myself, um, I, I, I would, well, we do refer to, we, we have golf courses, you know, those are uses, carnival is a use.
We won't be having any more of those.
No.
But it's not a use that's referred to in the text, that's the point.
Well, wouldn't it be, isn't it referred to, and, and I don't know, the, you know, because there's so much text there, um, don't we refer that in, in, in our, what's permitted in districts, or what they have to come for a permit for?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe it's referred to at all, uh, carnivals or golf courses specifically.
Yeah, so they would have to apply for a special permit and get that approved, right, because if it's not in regulations, they have to apply for a special permit.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I don't, there's definitely no reference to carnivals, the only thing even close to it is the agricultural ancillary entertainment, that's the closest thing, and that, there are specific parameters described for that, and it is also specifically defined in the glossary.
So, so what is, so you're saying that, um, St. Joseph's Fair or Carnival, whatever it's called, they will be able to have it anymore, I, I don't, I don't understand.
Apply for a special permit, which I think-
So, so then you make a definition for it, it was under a special permit.
I don't think we have to.
I mean, is it a zoning permit that they need, or is it just like a, a, a permission to operate a fair, like, like a, um, a temporary food license or a raffle license, does it need to go to zoning?
Um, the, well, that's a, I don't have a short answer for that, sorry.
What is the benefit, what is the benefit to us to have zoning be involved in the sighting of a fair or a carnival, I mean, maybe there is an answer, I don't know the answer to this question, that's why I'm posing it, it's not rhetorical.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Alvin.
Yeah, to Tara's question, when it comes to carnivals and those type of things, the fire marshal and the building official get involved, that's part of the, part of the state requirement.
So is, so is their authority sufficient, I mean, you guys really want to be reviewing carnival?
It is specific, yes, fire marshal has to be involved, the building official has to be involved, as we were over the years with, uh, with the one in Thompson.
So, so then why do the church, um, I think it's on 131, have to come to me when they wanted to have a, a, um, a nativity scene or some kind of Christmas scene, religious Christmas scene up there, they, they-
Because some knucklehead wrote it into the last draft, so they could pay us money.
I, I wouldn't, there's, there's got to be a reason why a person wrote it into the last draft, so.
I think, I think maybe when the draft, when the last, when it was written, obviously it's been thirty years, so things have changed, and maybe they were being very particular and very cautious about what was happening in the small town, now it's thirty years later, and people are unhappy that they're paying so much money in taxes, there's nothing in Thompson to do, nobody's coming, and so now we're trying to change that so that people would love to come to Thompson, so I think our regs would need to take care of that, so I think that it was, it was back then, and that was good for then, but times are changing, and this is changing, and I think we just have- and I think we just have to try to make the best of what we have different.
Yep, I agree, Shirley.
Yeah, I mean, I...
I'm just going to end it here, I think, Tira, you and Cindy get together, I think the group, trust your judgment on what definitions should be, and you guys work together on this one. I don't, I don't think there's any...
Got you, brother.
All right. Go ahead, Bob.
Excuse me?
Yep, go ahead, Bob.
It's, it's over fifty years. I wonder why I want, a point I want to make is that in, in putting definitions in our regulations, it's important to understand that we're not bound to Webster's definition of alcoholic beverage. We define alcoholic beverages as, as a commission, and that withstands no other definition. The definition that we choose to put in the regulations.
But you can't make up...
That's, that's fine, that's fine, Bob, and that is an accurate statement. The, yeah, the, the question at hand is, you know, if we're including a definition, our definition, whatever that definition has to be, is it relevant to the document?
I think like Brian said, use the, use the definitions that are relevant to our document that we're working on now. Let us look at it. Listen, Alvin, are you sleeping?
I just want to make clear that we understand that we defined, yeah.
Right, correct, yeah. But you have to... Let Tira and Miss, and Cindy do the definitions, let us look at them, what, what is in our regulations, and then if we feel like they've missed something, or we want something in there defined specifically, then we can talk about it the next time. Is that good?
Sounds good. Because I'm very interested in seeing what Mr. Worsh's definition of the next one is, adult entertainment.
I'm bound by the fact that my girlfriend is sitting next to me.
There you go.
I think that makes it even more interesting.
It could be good or bad, Bob, that's good or bad.
And I wasn't touching that one.
There you go.
All right.
So essentially, it's a, it's a choice, it's a choice between a short and sweet or a really long and thorough definition. Yes.
Didn't we already decide where this was going?
Yes, but that's also a different issue. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to say this, and I did invite Al to dial in, he would have had to come in on a phone, on a computer, but he's opted not to. It is clear to me that Al has a strong status quo bias for what is already in the draft. So in several places, he has said, why is this not the 'oh seven' definition? Now, in some cases, you guys may prefer that, I'm not saying one is better or one is worse. I will say in the case of the adult educator, adult education, adult entertainment or adult use definition, perhaps, given the fact that we're really regulating this to discourage it, perhaps we don't need such an extensive amount of real estate in the glossary given to the existing definition. But it's a, it's a simple up or down, you want the new one, the old one?
Yeah. I'm in, I'm in favor of less is more in this particular regard.
Yes.
I'm okay with the new one.
It's the old one then, right?
Yep. Is everyone in favor of the old one? I don't think there's any need to have cabaret and motion pictures and all this other stuff.
So that is, that is the old one, that is the old one.
Oh, that is the old one?
The old one is the longer one.
Landry, what, the old one?
Could you, could you read the new one then, please?
Yes, sirs. Adult entertainment, a use intended only for persons having reached legal age of majority, which is sexually explicit but otherwise legal in nature. Adult entertainment uses include adult bookstores, adult live entertainment establishments, adult motion picture theaters, adult mini motion picture theaters, I don't even know what that is, an adult video store, and an adult paraphernalia store. In the old definition, there are sub definitions for each of those things. Adult use, adult cabaret, adult, you know, this is nothing we needed.
No, it's the new one.
New one.
Thank you.
All right, we're in favor of the new one on that, and that is the end of that one. All right, moving on. Page ninety-one, go ahead, Tira.
Yeah, so the next one, bed and breakfast, does bring up a point which might be worth revisiting. Now Cindy did ask, you know, whether it belongs, because she didn't see it in the regs, it is in there in the table of uses.
I looked again today, and I don't know how I missed it the first time I looked, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem, but Al did raise another point, which is that he wanted to define the number of rooms, and he also suggests limiting it to four, essentially because that is what it currently is. I make the point that there, the house that I'm, that I live in, for example, has thirteen rooms, fourteen rooms, right? If I wanted to convert it to a B and B, should I only get to convert four? You know, I think that's just...
No, you get to convert seventy-five, sixty percent, sixty-five percent of it.
It's only limited by the septic system that you can put in.
Correct.
Right now, up on the hill, the Mason House, right, it's a good example. I think they're going to have nine or ten rooms.
All right, we're all, we're all in favor, there's no limitation, it's by the...
I agree, I make that motion.
Okay, good, moving on.
Yes.
Page ninety-one, something about a bond, what is this, bond deposits?
Yeah, again, we're, it's, it's on, it's just like more status quo bias. The current, the current definition, meaning the one from two thousand twelve or whenever it was, the definition is, a bond is a deposit of a specified amount as determined by the commission. In this case, the new one is a little longer. A deposit of a specific amount as determined by the commission generally required as security against proper completion of certain special permit activities. I actually think that specification is more useful.
I think so, too.
I agree.
I like that one.
All right.
Okay, moving on.
Page ninety-two, childcare center. What is this, holy smokes, this is a long one.
Yeah, this is one where Cindy and Al had some, had some agreement, they wanted to add back in all these, childcare center, adult daycare center, childcare, child daycare center, which, again, you can, but we don't refer to them specifically. I'm kind of of the opinion on these, and it's certainly open for the discussion, that, you know, a business that has rules that are not governed by the commission, in other words, health codes, you know, the parameters under which they may operate, are just businesses, and they should fall under the category of business to which they adhere most closely. For example, as we were discussing in the limited neighborhood enterprises, I think a person with a home daycare center with all the appropriate certifications and licenses could make an application under that limited neighborhood enterprise. A place like an assisted living facility or an elder care service which has medical facilities, that's a higher standard, and would come in under the higher standard. So I don't know that we need to spell them out, although we can if you want.
Well, I think you need to, because you can have with limit, I think it's limited by state statutes, so I'd have to look into it more, but you can have elder care services at your home, an adult daycare center, and I understand what you're saying, that if you put in that neighborhood, whatever it is, but I, I think that, I really do still think it needs to be spelt out for, for people to understand what they can and can't have in their home.
This childcare center, that's special permit, too, Tira, is that special permit?
Well, they're not, they're not referred to in the tables of uses, they're not separated out as specific types of businesses. So if we add the definition, that implies that we have to go back into the tables of uses and indicate the level of review at which they are permitted, which is fine, if that's the way you guys want to go. I would argue the other point is that they are businesses, and in as far as they have needs that are described elsewhere, in other words, can it be in my house only? Do I have to be in a, in a, you know, a commercial building of some kind? But that is
Yep.
more the area of zoning, but I, I am open on this one to either, either solution.
Yep, okay. I think, I think I'm in favor of having them listed like this, because at some point when you're submitting the site plan or special permit for a business, I would like to understand these individual categories for us to review later, if it does come back up, plus if they are opening up a, I'll just call it a childcare service, that they understand that we're looking for these individual areas to be specific in nature, so we understand what they're going to be operating in their home. So I would support the three, the categories like this.
Okay, all right, I'll retrofit them in. Okay. That's all we need on that, then, I'll just go back and, I'll essentially crib from what we have and adapt as required.
All right, is everybody, sounds like everybody's okay. Page ninety-two, Connecticut guidelines for soil and erosion incentive control, definition, no action required on this one.
Yeah, Marla specifically asked for that, and we do refer to it, so we'll keep that one in. Now the next one, Janet, would you like to unmute yourself? Are you still there, Janet? I can see you.
I unmuted myself.
Janet has something to say on this item. Page ninety-two, a country inn in our current proposed draft is an owner occupied dwelling, part of which is used as overnight accommodations for transients in exchange for compensation. A country inn is distinct from a bed and breakfast in that the country inn may also include an area for food service, which may provide meals other than breakfast, and may also be open to the general public. Janet Blanchett discovered, or caused me to discover, a deficiency in both the existing and the proposed draft. Would you like to talk about that, Janet?
Well, the, the interesting thing is in the current regulations, there's quite a long section on country ends, and nowhere does it mention that it's supposed to be owner occupied, but Tira did tell me that in the definitions, it says it's to be owner occupied. So subsequently, it's my understanding that the P and Z Commission approved the Lord Thompson Manor and the Mason House, neither of which are owner occupied, it's my understanding, and further, the permit, the country inn permit of Lord Thompson Manor has been approved annually. So clearly, I feel like that the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't think that it's utmost important that it be owner occupied, and some of these larger converted buildings typically aren't owner occupied, you know, they have like a caretaker situation. So I just hope in the new regulations, this would be straightened out.
So they, so they own the, they own the property, they're just not living in it? That is, that's where the owner occupi, occupancy thing is of, like, messed up a little bit, correct?
Correct. Right, so essentially, we're right back to the idea of an incremental set of definitions. So a B and B is defined as a, essentially a home, right? I have, I have a house, I have rooms to let in my house, and I think everybody's been happy with that. So I have proposed to solve this problem and bring our regulations more in conformity with what we've been approving for years, despite the existing definition. This is my suggestion. A building originally designed as a residence, which is converted to use as overnight accommodations for transients in exchange for compensation. A country inn may or may not be the primary residence of the owner, but may not be a part of a hospitality group or a franchise. A country inn may include an area for food and beverage service, may provide meals other than breakfast, and may also be open to the general public. That is how I have proposed we solve this problem, but you guys can tell me if you find that satisfactory.
I make a motion that that solves the problem.
I second that.
I'm not on the board.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go, go ahead, Mike.
That's all well and good on definition, but should there be or not some contingent in there about having, being staffed twenty-four hours a day? Whether the owner occupied or by an employee?
In my opinion, the answer would be no on that.
All right, just trying to protect, you know, if somebody wants to come and go or whatever, and nobody's there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Although, in both cases, they are, Lord Thompson Manor, I think they live there, Andrew and Jackie, or at least...
Yes, but not the Mason House.
And the Mason House is going to have a caretaker on press.
But it's not the owner.
Yeah.
Where someone, a staff is there.
Right, a staff is there. So I was just trying to make sure that maybe somebody is always there.
I guess the question is, is staffing the, is staffing the jurisdiction of zoning?
Yeah, I don't...
Seems like an odd fit to me.
Who's going to go check at two, three o'clock in the morning to see if it's staffed correctly?
I'll get into that, I don't think so.
Nobody, because you could go out on a date, I'm just saying that, you know, I'm, I'm, no, I don't say they have to be there twenty-four seven, I'm just saying that somebody should be, well, I am saying twenty-four seven, somebody should be there to operate the so-called business. If you're going to have bed and breakfast or a country inn, people are going to be sleeping there, people should be there to make sure everything is safe.
Yeah, but I would say that's just part of how they're, operate their business, and that's not our, that's not our deal. All right, so Bob, I think Bob Worsh did make a motion to...
Accept Tyra's definition.
Yeah, who seconds that?
I will.
Alvin Hill's second that.
All right, Alvin Hill seconds. Let's just go around real quick, Alvin Hill?
Yes.
Chris Nelson?
Christopher Nelson, yes.
Missy?
Missy DeRozers, yes.
Mike Krogel?
Mike Krogel, yes.
Darlene?
Darlene Langlois, yes.
Christine?
Chetelle, yes.
Who else, I meant, Bob, Bob Worsh? And John Lenke?
John D. Lenke, yes.
And Brian Santos, yes. That passes.
So it shall be done.
So it shall be done.
All right, page ninety-five, fence, freestanding structures, does not look like there's anything for us to take action on.
No, not that one.
Okay, ninety-six, kennels, commercial.
I don't think you should be allowing kennels in, you know, if, whatever words you're going to use in neighborhood, whatever, that's going above and beyond. You know, kennels, they make noise, the dogs make noise.
Cindy, I don't know if you're part of one of the meetings, I'm losing track of all the meetings, but there, the kennels are allowed in two specific districts. One was the commercial.
Right.
And then there was...
Yeah, business development and Thompson Corridor development.
That was passed.
The two business oriented.
It was a split decision, and it, since it was written in that way, it is passed, so...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so the, the issue here is that Al, again, we're going back to, this is the way it is, why are we changing it? In the existing regulations, two thousand seven, two thousand twelve, whatever, a kennel is defined as any structure or premises on which five or more dogs over four months of age are kept or maintained. So we've differentiated in this draft between a commercial kennel and a non-commercial kennel. I can't say that I'm crazy about commercial versus non-commercial, they're both commercials far as I'm concerned, but as a distinction, the ones that are specifically limited to those two districts are the commercial kennels. A facility maintained for boarding companion animals, which may or may not include grooming services, and shall include veterinary hospitals that board companion animals for non-medical purposes. And then a non-commercial kennel is essentially somebody who's a private breeder. who's a private breeder.
Oh, so that's not, so that's, so you're, you are allowing kennels in non-commercial districts, which I think it, it opens the door for a lot of problems. I didn't really, so is, is that right? Am I accurate? You are allowing kennels in commercial districts?
Uh, I, I think it's actually kind of an oversight. It wasn't addressed at all because the item of commercial kennels was specifically raised, which is how it landed back in the draft at all.
Yeah.
Um, so the non-commercial kennel was essentially, and I, I think you're back to, to rural businesses here, a person who is a private breeder.
Yeah, I, I think that's gonna open a real big can of worms. Um,
Yeah.
Morning Star. I mean, I wasn't here when you had the issue with Morning Star kennel, but so.
Well, they fall under the definition of commercial kennel regardless, right? That was a boarding facility, was it not?
Well, that was, yeah. You just have to be careful with kennels.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, that's a tough one. We used to have a gentleman in this town, uh, God rest his soul, if you want to say that. He used to be a breeder of greyhounds and, uh, he was right across the street from, uh, the, the, that used to be, well, I'm going to say where J&amp;J is. And he used to, he used to breed, he had his own kennel. He had everything there, all private, and he used to breed greyhounds for races. And that, I'm going back 20, 25 years ago. Nothing has changed since then. So if you want to call that a non-commercial or, or a commercial area, so be it. But, uh, I think we should just limit the kennels to a commercial area and leave the non-commercial out. That's my opinion.
So whether it's a commercial or a non-commercial kennel, uh, you would have that in the table of uses just in those two districts? That's an easy fix. I can do that.
I, I, I think that would be the best place, in my opinion, but that's my opinion, okay? But I'm going by what we had in this town in past history. See, that's what I remember of those, of that one kennel. And I think there was a few other private ones that were just like little breeders. They had two or three dogs breed, you know, get a litter or two, sell them or whatever down the road. But, you know, that didn't last very long. But someone wants to come in and put a doe in up or has a doe and he wants to put, you know, house 40 dogs, okay? But make sure it's in a good place where it ain't going to be keeping the neighbors all the way, you know, halfway or half a mile down the road. So we hear the dog bark it.
Okay. I can, I can retrofit that back into, into the, uh, table of uses. And then the, the definitions clarify which category is which.
That sounds good.
Would that satisfy, uh, Ms. Cynthia's dog?
Yeah, yeah. Because if I ever came upon a puppy mill, I would go nuts.
Yeah. Well, yeah, let's, let's be clear. I think dog breeding is a disgusting business to be in.
Right.
Because it's, uh, the results. But if it is a legal allowed business, uh, you know, where are we permitting it?
I agree with what John has outlined. That sounds good. All right. Page 97 Lot Frontage.
Good one. Oh, yeah, it was a good one.
Yes. So this was me trying to, finally trying to, uh, get to the heart of what Mike's been suggesting about continuous frontage, which must only be a continuous straight line, right? That's the only way you can really differentiate between, I mean, I was, when we were discussing this earlier, I was trying to envision a situation in which the frontage line was not continuous. And the only thing that I could think of was just something that disrupts the straight line. Your lot is still like, your lot, it just would have cut-ins. Does that get to what you had in mind, Mike?
Yes, it is. It's, it's if you have, um, a certain length of, of property or frontage, okay? And you have another house in your way. I mean, you, you can still, it's an interrupted line. That's what it comes down to. As long, you know, we were always talking about if everything meet the setbacks, it really didn't matter about the frontage itself, the length of frontage. But when you start putting a distance to things, and say you have, I don't know, we'll talk 150 foot frontage, correct? At this point?
Yeah. Yeah.
If you have 120, 125 feet of frontage, and then you have an obstruction, you no longer have the 150 feet to have a building lot, or you have to make a flag lot, a back lot, or whatever you'd like to call it. Um, you know, and that's one way around things. But if you're keeping it to a frontage line, you could always go around your obstruction, whether it be another house lot or somebody else's property. I'm assuming it would be somebody else's property stopping it. You know, so it would be an obstructed to the shortest line of 150 feet.
Well, I think, uh, the way Tira outlined it here, if everyone's read the definition, makes sense to me. So I'm, I'm willing to.
Yeah. I'll have to reread this here. One second. The length of the line between side lot and, uh, passant through any points. Well, lot frontage, according to this definition, lot frontage is the, the length of the shortest straight line between side lot line.
That's how it, that's how it's current, that's how it's currently phrased. So my suggestion is below in the comments, uh, um, at the end of that comment. So, uh, I'll read it. Uh, the lengths measured between side lot lines and located entirely within the lot. So I've just taken out sort of straight line. So the length measured between side lot lines and located entirely within the lot, passing through any point or points of the front line, such frontage may be non-continuous, i.e. it is not required to be a straight line between points, but may be irregular.
Irregular is a good word, yes. Yeah, lines does have to be continuous.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Alvin.
Uh, you could have, you know, a front lot that's interrupted with a right of way to a flag lot in the back. And you own both sides of that flag lot.
That's an excellent example, Alvin.
Yep. I think so.
Do we think that this second proposed definition satisfies that?
I believe it does.
I believe it does, it will actually.
All right.
Okay.
So it shall be.
Okay.
Yep. We are so close to the end, guys.
All right. Page 97 Manufactured Homes, or Home. No action. Love that one.
Yep. Me too.
97 New Additions.
So this one will take some discussion, guys, because this was, this came up earlier.
This is
I'm sorry, which one is this?
So it's many, heavy manufacturing and light manufacturing. Uh, yeah, go ahead, John.
Page 97?
Uh, yes, sir.
Well, it, it would, so it's not on page 97, guys. It would be on page 97. These are, these are new additions based on the conversation that we had last week about the openness of the statement of manufacturing where it was allowed. And what I believe the consensus was that we came away with, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we, we do not want to permit heavy manufacturing, but we do want to permit light manufacturing or light industrial. So the question is how to define those in a meaningful way. And these two things are what I came up with. So I'll read them and then you guys should discuss them because this is brand new and we want to be sure we get the, um, the intent correct. So manufacturing, heavy, also heavy industrial. Processing or fabrication of products primarily extracted from raw materials or bulk storage and handling of such products and materials, which involve more intense impacts associated with large industrial uses, their accessory outdoor storage uses and large building areas. Uses which pose significant risks due to the involvement of explosives, radioactive materials or other hazardous materials are included in this category. Examples include but are not limited to wrecking yards, building material manufacturing, chemical plants, concrete and asphalt plants, commercial slaughterhouses and freight facilities. Heavy manufacturing is a prohibited use in the town of Thompson. That's heavy. Light manufacturing, also light industrial. Fabrication or assembly of products lower in intensity, cleaner and generally more compatible when located adjacent to commercial or mixed-use districts than are heavy manufacturing uses. Light manufacturing or industrial uses are those which do not generate excessive noise, particulate matter, vibration, smoke, dust, gas, fumes, odors, radiation, or other nuisance characteristics. And again, examples include but are not limited to appliance and electronic device assembly, machine shop and related activities, construction of signs, including painted signs, light sheet metal products such as ventilating ducts and eaves, ice manufacturing, ceramic products provided that kiln shall only be operated by gas or electricity, products from previously prepared materials, tinsmith and roofing service, milk processing plants, processing sale and display of monuments and stones, forming of small concrete products, i.e. stepping stones, fence posts, yard ornaments, et cetera, and cultured marbled products. Light manufacturing is an allowed use in the town of Thompson as described in the tables of uses of the various districts.
What about sawmill?
I can toss sawmill in there. Although I think that kind of falls under the rural agricultural use in some places, but, um, it's worth adding here as well. Sawmill.
What's ice?
They're just examples anyway. Well, you get your commercial bagged ice from somebody. I mean, it's, you know, they don't, they don't churn it out of the rivers.
I get mine from Cumberland.
It was lake and, it was lake and sawdust. That's, that's what ice was years ago.
Yeah.
John Lenke, did you have something to add?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
Um, everything, I, I, I kind of agree with everything, but under, uh, head, um, heavy manufacturing, if you want to call it, there's building material manufacturing, I mean, there is a various type of building, uh, material manufacturing. You, you have some businesses that are what you want, you could, uh, call it light industrial manufacturing of building products, uh, where they're not really doing any heavy stuff, but, you know, all light stuff. They're got a good controlled environment. Uh, I think that is a set of woods, building material manufacturing, you know, could be, be pertaining to wood, uh, machine shop, wow, that does feel, and that's light manufacturing. So we should think about building material manufacturing when somebody has a business that is trying to do a wood product, make wood products, special product, but it's not out there covering 500,000 square feet, you know, it's a limited building. They don't want to be too big, but they want to be small enough to have a good business. I think that's
So you want to take that item out as an example of heavy manufacturing?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Uh, I think a person should have the right, if he wants to run a business and, you know, and running it out of a, a, you know, a 50-foot square building or something where, you know, he's just making a one certain or two products for other companies or whatever, it should be allowed, uh, in that.
All right, Tyra, Tyra, what John is talking about is like, uh, that one in Ellington, Connecticut, clod of farms, where they make
I don't know. I, I have no, no reference there, but
Yeah, it's portable, portable sheds are made indoor.
David Ernie does that. What's that?
What's that?
David Ernie makes portable sheds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm lucky we're taking the building material out anyway, because I think it's a little confusing because there's obviously building material, quote-unquote, manufacturing that's allowed in the next light. So I, I feel like it's this confusing thing. So I, I take
Yeah, okay. I can take that out. But the general, uh, the general tenor, is that, you guys happy with the, I mean, because those things are only exemplar. They're not an exhaustive list regardless. So
That's the beginning.
There is probably, there's probably an element of subjectivity in here that's going to be hard to peel out. Um, I mean, these are cribbed. These, these are cribbed from some online, um, guidance documents about it.
Oh, I'm sure there's something that we're not thinking about right now. So I don't, I don't
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, we've got to be a little careful on that heavy too, because we do still have a, uh, uh, in this town and, and they, and they can start it up anytime they want. It's on, off of Wilsonville Road. Uh, there's a quarry right there where they used to have, they have an asphalt. I think they still got the asphalt plant here and, uh, I'm not sure if the concrete plant was moved in there, but it's, it's right there. It hasn't been up and running in the last, I mean, maybe 20 years maybe, but it still exists. And if they wanted to open it up and start running, you know, make an asphalt and whatnot, they have the right to do it according to what, you know, if
But that would be, that would be, that would be a case of an existing non-conforming use if, if it was previously permitted.
Right.
Yep. Okay. I think we're in agreement here. Let's move on.
Good.
Okay.
All right. Page 99 Person.
Yeah. I, I mean, for the same reason that I don't want families to, I just, it's not relevant to the text. We don't refer in any way to what a person may do. We talk about uses and design. And this particular definition is probably legally correct, but so broad as to be fundamentally useless.
Yeah, I think it's useless. I, I'm, I'm in favor of striking. Does anyone oppose that?
No.
Nope.
All right, striking it.
Strike. Hey, guess what, guys? We're on the last page. We're on the last page.
None, none.
Excited.
All right. This is a, what was that, John?
I said, don't get too excited. Go ahead. Keep going, Mike. Keep going, Brian. Don't stop.
Okay, page 99. This is a new addition to the, the regulations, the word petition.
Yeah. Cindy had suggested we should have it because we refer to petitions. I, I agree with that. Um, and this is just a, a brief stab at it. It's, you know, it's not much. It's just a written application from a person or persons to the commission asking that some authority be exercised to grant relief, favors or privileges. I think I took that from legal glossary. Uh, Article 2, Section 9 of these regulations describes the petition requirements to request an amendment to these regulations or the zoning map.
I feel like that's totally appropriate and that's a good addition.
Thanks.
Anyone else moving on? Okay. All right. Page 99 Photovoltaic Solar System. I read through this one. Uh, I'm in agreement with, with Alan, uh, has suggested. I think it just makes perfect sense. A power system does, designed to supply solar power means of photovoltaics, blah, blah, blah. I think this is, I think it's totally
You like Alvin's?
I do, yeah.
Okay. I like it too.
Oh, we're gonna have some good ones on that one there, Ms. Tira.
Yeah.
Uh, what, no, what, what John is referring to is that he, uh, dialed into that webinar
Yep.
Uh, on Friday. I got all the attachments. I downloaded them this morning, but I didn't want to overload you guys. So I'll send them for your pleasure reading in the week. It's, it's interesting stuff. Um, I also signed up for a webinar on July 15th about pollinators and power. So that, that, um, that provision that we added for, you know, encouraging agricultural use, this one is specific to, um,
Use the
Pollinator meadows and, and beekeeping. So that one looks cool. But the, there's like six, six slide decks that I'll forward to everybody and you just take a look at them as you like. But I think it's of interest to the commission.
I look forward to it.
You're gonna like it, Brian.
Good. All right, moving on. Next definition, principal building. All right, no action needed on this one. No action on desired guidelines and no action on the last one. So that, I think that does it.
You guys, we are through the draft now. I say that, I say that. Don't, don't celebrate too much.
I won't.
We have, we have, um, I, I still have an open question out to NDDH about drawing a new district for the Lake area properties. We haven't really resolved that. Carolyn, you still on? Yeah, you still on? Uh, Carolyn and Marla have done some background work on that. Based on all the conversation that we have had as we've discussed these districts, we bounced back and forth on that for a while. We, we discarded the NCOG stuff because it was too broad and not helpful. But it does seem to me that these properties are distinct in their problems and requirements. So as soon as I have that back from NDDH, I'm gonna propose we, we have one more, essentially just to discuss that. And I think that that will wrap us.
Do you want to talk about the, uh, the emails that we were sharing earlier with Alvin on the gravel mining stuff? Are we doing that now, or are we just gonna write them?
Oh, uh, I kinda already wrote it in, Brian, to, um, because it was logical.
I can't remember, was it 3,000 cubic yards or 1,500 that we allowed without permit? I can't remember.
1,500.
Up to 1,500 square feet.
All right, yeah, so 1,500, just do the two-foot, uh, the, the second. I gave you two options. It was one for 3,000 or one for 1,500. So just use the 1,500 one.
You got it. Yeah, every, all of the rest of that I thought made perfect sense.
Okay. Perfect. And we can strike the fee thing. Uh, I would, that was just a suggestion. I, I totally understood your point, Alvin, uh, earlier. So we can just strike that.
Okay. All right.
All right, do we...
Look at all that good that we did.
Do we need another meeting? Are we all set, Tara, or what's the deal now? What do we do?
Well, well, so that's what I was saying. So we're through the draft. Except that I have, I, I am anticipating getting some commentary back from NDDH to write one more section, which is a district for the Lake properties.
Yep.
Once we have that, I'd like to have one more meeting to just discuss it, make sure everybody agrees, drop it in the draft, and then schedule, you know, then drop the, the amended draft, the one that includes all the highlighted changes from these discussions. Post that, have that informal Q and A. And I'll be looking for, you don't all have to be involved in that, um, but whoever wants to be involved in just answering Q and As in an informal, we'll set like a, a two, an hour and a half to a two-hour limit for people to come in, ask whatever questions they want, uh, and deal with it that way. And then schedule the public hearing. We can, you can have this done by the end of July. I, I feel pretty good about that.
All right, so just keep us up to date on scheduled meetings when you, whenever you get it done, and just email us out if we need a special meeting again. So I, we'll just wait.
Okay, I, I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mike.
All right, um, one of them was about the frontage. I know at one point it was, um, proposed that we did 100-foot frontage, and we could get 10 house lots. I, I'm thinking of a dead-end street.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Mike, I'm glad that you brought that back up.
Yeah, um, I'm just thinking now about building and everything else. At 100-foot frontage, a contract that could get 10 houses per side of the street, which works out well for him, because I think it helps him pay for the, the paving of the road. Now, that was struck down, and we went to 150 feet, which gives you six and a half lots per side.
Right.
I wanted to make a proposal because people were willing to accept the 100 feet without really any qualms, more or less. And then everyone jumped up to 150 foot. But I, I'd like to make a proposal that we dropped it, well, not dropped it, but brought it down to 125 feet frontage, which would give a contractor, anyone, eight house lots per side. And I mean, I know we're talking 25 feet, but it's, it's really not that much. But then again, some people could consider it to be. So was this one thing, if there was any thought or discussion about that?
Well, I, from what I remember on that, there was a significant amount of back and forth on, in that particular regard, uh, and...
But we had voted originally for the 100 foot. We accepted it.
I don't recall that.
And 100 feet is small. 100 feet is, is small. I don't disagree with that.
I don't, I don't recall that. Somebody could correct me in my memory here. But I thought there was, we talked about the 100, but we motioned on the 150 after, I think it was...
The 150 is what was voted on last time, but that was in absence of Mike making this alternate proposal. However, Mike, I, when, when I replied to you initially, I had forgotten and, and should have brought it up right away. It's gotta be in 50-foot increments. That was the whole reason that we bumped it back up to 50 from 40 in the, in the density zone.
And the other question I have, and the other question I have is when we're talking about back lots or flag lots, or whatever you wish to call them, the old regulation said they had to be one and a half times as big. Is that still so, or can they just be the, whatever zoning we're talking about? The one they...
Uh, I don't, I don't see a good reason for them to be larger.
Right, because if they meet the...
Again, sort of for the same, for the same reason that a smaller lot is otherwise more conservation-friendly. It's a smaller footprint. It cuts less into the property. In fact, I don't even really understand the reasoning of demanding that they be bigger. But, um, maybe Carolyn has some insight in that, that...
I think they better have been thinking that the, the driveway going back was, was going to maybe accommodate for the other half acre or whatever it would be. But that's just my thought.
I, uh, Tara, I don't really have any insight into why it was one and a half at that time. I, I think that, you know, when zoning first came in, they basically looked at the town and they saw the areas that were more densely populated and that, you know, they kind of zoned it as it was developed. So...
Yeah, yeah. Makes sense.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yeah, and the one and a half, you know, it may be that, uh, the, the thinking was basically the larger the lot that you require, the less development you'll have. I don't know. You know, that, that's...
Okay.
I really don't know why.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure that there was some kind of thought process behind it, but it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me in terms of a requirement. You know, the lot size, the lot size, if we're only allowing one flag lot, then the size of that lot, there's, there's no particular motivation to force somebody to have a larger one.
Yeah, and, and it may be that it would have to wind up being larger just because of the limitations of the, of the property itself.
Very possibly, yeah.
I just have one thing to add, Tara. I'm very interested in the fee structure. Where are we in the develop of, of that charting?
Nowhere, but it'll be done within a week or so.
Okay, fair enough.
I, I mean, that's, that's a matter of me pulling factual data, finding out what all the fees are, they're relevant, and putting it in a, an easy-to-read chart. And Cindy actually did provide me a chart. I don't know if it's complete. So, um, as soon as I can verify whether that's complete, I'll just, unfortunately, it's a PDF, so I'll have to recreate it.
Um, I found it, I, I found a CD. I didn't put it into the computer, but I found a CD that said fees, fee chart or something. So we'll have to throw that in the computer and see what it says.
Okay.
So you might not have to redo it.
Yeah, that, that would be merciful. Yeah.
And I have one more question. I'm like, okay, when we were talking about the bonding fees, right now we have $6,000 per acre, and we went up to eight, correct?
No, we went up to the commission sets it, according to what they think is appropriate.
That's, that's why I'm asking that question, Mike, just so you know. Go ahead, Bob.
Good night.
He left when he came back.
Why don't you just, why don't you just ask him to move to adjourn?
Alvin, did you have something?
I'll second it.
Out there, out there, yeah.
All right, sounds like we, we've had enough. It's 9:01.
Good, good work, everybody. I'll, I'll keep you posted on the Lake District stuff.
All right, Bert.
Good night.
Good night.